I don't know.
Becky, are you?
Not sure.
How do you do it?
Okay then, you got Joe's phone ready.
No, I can barely figure out my own.
Send it down to Chris.
Under this message, as Joe.
Okay, it is 9:00 AM. We'll call this County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy of which is at the entrance to this room. At about 9:15, we will also be meeting as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meetings Act. First order of business is to open with prayer. And Commissioner Williams, would you lead us, please?
Yes, please join me. Heavenly Father, be with us today as we do the business of our patrons. Give us wisdom and sound deliberation. Be with those who protect our freedoms, both here and abroad, and with our first responders, who protect our health and well-being. Thank you for the many blessings we enjoy, including all the plentiful rains this year. It's been a tremendous boon to everyone, not only to the economic value it has, but the spiritual uplifting it brings. We ask you all these things in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Next order of business is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on August 7, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the minutes of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting that was held on August 7, 2023.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Brens.
Aye.
Wular.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Next item is to consider the following, first being the claims and treasures receipts.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the claims and treasures receipts that's presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Wular.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Next item is to receive and order filed the fee reports submitted by the Register of Deeds and County Sheriff.
Make a motion that we approve the fee reports submitted by the Register of Deeds and County Sheriff.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Looks like we have two from the County Sheriff. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Wular.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Morning, Todd.
Good morning, folks.
Morning. Next item is a special designated... Oops, just... Okay, next on our agenda is a special designated liquor permit submitted by GL Concepts LLC, doing business as Good Life on the Bricks for a wedding reception to be held at Harbor Lights on September 2, 2023. Looks like I have a check from GL Concepts over the fee. We have a catering license. And we have afforded them special permits previously. Any comment or feedback from the sheriff's office on this regards?
No.
No news is good news. Means that they plague well, colleagues.
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the special designated liquor permit submitted by GL Concepts LLC, doing business as Good Life on the Bricks for a wedding reception to be held at Harbor Lights on September 2, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Wular.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Okay, next on our agenda is authorizing the chairman to sign a right-of-way permit submitted by Hershey Co-op Telephone Company. Do we have anyone here from Hershey Telephone Company? Jason, you have spoken with these folks?
Yep.
I did a very positive response from the road superintendent.
This is down on Hershey Dickens and what road? I can't really read this. State Farm?
Let's see.
Looks like State Farm Road here. Hershey Dickens here.
Your copy is a little less faint than mine, but I think I can see something farm. That would be State Farm. How far down do they go? This will be in the right-of-way ditch then, is that right? And you've talked about proper depth and all.
Yep.
Becky, do we have a check submitted by them?
I've got the check. I'm just trying to get a link or some kind of reading that would give me a sense of what's happening. I know where Morehead says that, if that's what that says. And this is from State Farm. So... Actually, I'm going in the wrong direction. South must be to the left, if that's State Farm.
What's the check for?
$169, I think.
Doing the math. $69.
So you know where State Farm?
Roughly half mile.
Well, I mean, I know where it is and I know where State Farm. And I know where Morehead's at. Been there many times. I'm just trying to see if that complies with what Chris and I have been working on. And the $169 doesn't feel right. That's how come I say...
$100 may speed and $69 for the length, so...
For the what?
For the length.
I thought we were going with also a length, a distance.
Distance, 2,300 feet.
Okay, so you're saying it's like three-quarters or two-thirds of a mile?
Yeah.
Okay, that works for me.
My question.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that you sign the right-of-way permit submitted by Hershey Co-op Telephone Company.
Sir, I have two checks here. One is for $25, and another one is for $169.50.
Is the $25...
Right-of-way permit?
They both say right-of-way permit on them.
Do they have an old check that you tried? Will this return the $25 check?
There would have been the old check amount, so they were...
Yeah, maybe they felt that was on top of the other sheet.
And it's not correct.
No.
So just the $169 is all they need?
Should be, if that distance is correct, which I might, based on my regulation, where the Mormons are.
Yeah, it goes from State Farm Road on the east ditch to the next road south of there. And Bill Morehead lives just south of that road. Okay, do we have a motion?
Yes.
And a second. Any other discussion?
Wular.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye. Williams.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Okay, next on our agenda is authorizing the chairman to sign a right-of-way permit submitted by Dawson Public Power District. And we have maybe someone... Yeah, we have someone from Dawson Public Power. Sir?
Yes, I am here again.
Thank you very much.
How are you?
Good morning, Erin.
How are you today?
I think the deputy county attorney would like to have you sign in, so we have obvious proof that you were here. And this is for a... Tell me about this line, sir.
A customer wants to put in a new house service. We need to bore under the road.
And that is located on West Walker Road?
Yes.
And you have had a discussion with the road superintendent?
No, he was playing hooky last week.
Whoa, that's getting right to the point, wasn't it? You will have a discussion with him, I think.
Yes.
I have looked at it. No objection. Actually, we just finished one up and we sent photos of one of our previous permits. And I give them kudos because the pictures, the markers they put out there is very nice, exactly what we're looking for.
We simply followed the rules.
But there's a line under the road there, so good job.
I would expect nothing else.
And I have a chat. You only sent one, though.
I did.
What's...
It's my second rodeo.
Okay, so colleagues.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we authorize you to sign a right-of-way permit submitted by Dawson Public Power District for use of our right-of-way.
Second.
We have a motion and a second and one check. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brens.
Aye.
Wular.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye. Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Thank you, Erin.
I have a couple of questions, though, regarding your permits. Says that we can only put underground. Is that true?
You and I have had this conversation.
I want it on record.
So if you've had the conversation, let's go ahead and have it all over.
Yeah, exactly. So the fees pertain to... And this is something that Joe and I were working diligently on, disturbing of our right-of-way. Now, we have aerial, and we do care about the poles that may go in or in right-of-way, but those linear feet do not...
Well, I'm talking specifically... Line four in there. It says, "All lines, cables, or other ground items shall be at depth of no less than 42 inches." So anytime I cross the road, do I have to go underground?
Well, per the language, we probably need to get that cleaned up. So...
And then it also says, per the statutes 86-701, that is only for telecoms? I'm not a telecom. Do I have to follow this permit at all?
Yep. Telecoms are ones that can force us.
Okay, that was just for the permit that says that we have to do underground. So that's what we've been doing. And so we have to charge our customers accordingly. The underground is typically a lot more expensive than overhead for just simply going across the road. So that's something that we wanted cleared up, is right now we cannot do overhead line across the road according to this permit.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that the deputy county attorney work with Joe and I on adding a paragraph to deal with aerial crossings.
Joe, your...
My thoughts are, I would agree with Chris. We probably ought to sit down and talk about it and look at it. And we also want to study this issue rather than just assume what's been done.
The language does say all crossings must be underground at least 42 inches deep.
It says at 42 inches, and they're underground.
It says all crossings must be underground at least 42 inches deep.
We'll clarify that language.
Yeah, you're interpreting it different than I do.
That's...
Letter of the law.
Letter of the law. It's, well, I disagree. It's pertaining to underground only. I think that's pretty straightforward. If you want to clean it up, go for it.
Yeah, I just... In our office, they want clarification because when we had both Custer and Dawson and McCook look at this, and they interpreted similar.
We'll get it fixed.
Okay, thank you, Mr.? Other task for deputy county attorney. Small steps.
Gentlemen, have a good day.
It is 9:15. We will recess as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equaliz... Excuse me. Board of Equalization, again abiding by the Open Meeting Act as amended. First item on this agenda is approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on August 7, 2023.
Chairman, I would move to approve the minutes regarding the Board of Equalization meeting that we held up August 7, 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Wular.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Next item is certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. Oh, good morning.
Good morning. Hey, Julie.
Good morning. Julie Singer, Lincoln County Assessor.
Looks like I have both personal property and real estate. Which one would you like to start with?
It doesn't matter to me. The personal property is an amended schedule that was filed because they were also reporting the equipment in a different county. So it was being double reported. So they're headquartered out of... I don't remember the other county off the top. Hayes County. So they decided that they wanted to correct it, so they get it instead of us. So we had to correct it for them.
Company filed an amended personal property return. Most of their personal property was in Lincoln... It was in Hayes County. They are moving it all to Hayes County, then?
We have a few items here that they have in Lincoln County that they leave, but most of these are in Hayes County, the biggest percentage of the time. And that's the way the statute reads, wherever it's at. If it's used in multiple counties, wherever it's headquartered out of is where it should be reported.
Huntington National Bank out of Plymouth, Minnesota, in the amount of $10,445.56. Correct?
So... Did it put us the name of the bank?
Huntington National Bank.
And what items did they have up in Lincoln County, Julie?
Well, they're listed as just farming implement items with large figures. So I'm not 100% for sure what equipment it is. If it's just leased equipment that they're leasing. They've got three different ones listed. Harvesting producers, other farmland implement. The other one's other farmland implement. Yeah, that's what it says here. I guess it says it's leased equipment. They must be leasing it through the bank, and they have to report it.
No.
It's for Masonite. Well, the one up above, I think, is... It's got some Masonite equipment on there as well.
I'm going back a long time, Julie, so bear with me and I'll probably murder this, but there used to be a company that was headquartered out of here, that started out of here. They had Black Mack trucks, and a lot of their equipment was yellow and they had an office south of town. If you remember, when they started branching out, one of them they went to was Cheyenne. And I don't know if that was you or your predecessor or whatever. I remember we had that thing forever. And I'm thinking that the deputy county attorney at the time made the ruling that not where they're headquartered out of, but where they're primarily... Where they spend a majority of their time, right? So we, in fact, proved, without going too far, that a majority of the time was spent in North Platte, not in Cheyenne because of tax purposes. That's the only reason I asked for that, because if it's a farming operation, if they actually are on a farm in Lincoln County and spend most of their time in Lincoln County, that's an amount of money. That was the reason for my question.
Yeah.
And a mix of heart on you.
We'll keep our eyes on it for sure. We've got it flagged to watch.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Because it is, yeah.
Thank you very much.
We'll do that, yep.
Colleagues. This one would be personal property, so we do personal property and real estate separately, correct?
Right.
Colleagues, what's your question?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we authorize certificate of correction or refund of personal property. Is that what it is?
Yes, it is.
As submitted by the assessor's office. And authorize chairman to sign.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Along with her very pertinent note that she's the head of all of us and they're headed flagged. Thank you, Julie.
Yep.
Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Wular.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Another one is a real estate. And this is from Rose Anderson and Jody Black, Bruel, Nebraska. Mobile home has been moved to Bruel, Nebraska.
Yes, so this one is actually an acceleration of the 2023 taxes. Since they're moving it, we go ahead and collect the taxes now, so...
$1,251.79 on this mobile home that has been moved to Bruel, Nebraska.
I would make a motion that we approve, since it's anything that we can get into my first residency from Bruel, Nebraska, I think they'd probably appreciate it. I'd make a motion that we approve now. Right, chairman, sign.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Wular.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Thank you, Julie.
You've got to make three houses, two more rooms now.
Okay, next item is motor vehicle tax exemption applications as submitted by the county treasurer.
Good morning.
Good morning. Alex Gerchula, Lincoln County Treasurer.
Good morning, Alex.
Good morning.
Good morning. Looks like we've got a couple of them, correct?
Yes.
You two get to spar over that one.
Is that right?
You can't handle it. I almost only have a can.
Well, we can handle it.
Well...
Mr. Chairman, I have an application for exemption from the North Platte Opportunity Center for... Five different pieces of equipment. The first one is a 2021 Ford bus and a 2010 Ford cutaway van and a second 2010 Chevy Express van, a 2006 Chrysler Town and Country minivan, and a 2009 Ford Econoline wagon bus. These will all be used for charitable purposes. There's a note that says all vehicles are used exclusively for the transportation needs for those that North Platte Opportunity Center provides services to. This has been approved by our Lincoln County Treasurer, Alex Gerchula. My motion is that we also approve.
I'll second with a possible amendment so that will alleviate our fellow commissioner maybe doing a little bit of work. I think that we just ran out of space. That's a continuation of this application.
Is that a continuation of this?
They only had five spaces, so if you would make that as part of it.
There is a... Also for the record, there is a duplication of the description of the van at the bottom with no VIN number. So you might, for the record, draw a line through that and initial it because it's already enumerated on the first page.
All right, I will amend my motion to include a sixth vehicle, a Ford Econoline van, 2003 bus.
Two and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Wular.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Brens.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Thank you, Alex. Do you have any more for us this morning?
Not today.
Good, thank you. Next on our agenda is property valuation changes notices as submitted by the county assessor. You're back again.
Back again. This is for a mobile home that was moved to Dawson County in October of 2022. So it was okay to be on Lincoln County's tax rolls for 2022 because it was there January 1st. But it was not here January 1st of 2023. And we did not know that till just recently. So there is a value on it here for 2023. So this county board change is removing that value. That's the only way we can remove a value now is through a county board change.
Okay.
So since it was gone before January 1st, we need to remove the value of this.
This is for Mr. William Sonor?[1784.11]
Yes.
Amount of thirty thousand one hundred eight dollars, correct?
Yes.
Are you ready for motion?
Go ahead.
I'm not sure. Maybe I'll let you take it.
Chairman, regarding the property valuation changes on parcel number 51845, regarding Mr. William Sinore, I move to approve the reduction in value from thirty thousand one oh eight to zero due to the fact that the mobile home was moved off site.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Thank you, Julie.
Yep, thank you.
Is there any other business to come before the Lincoln County Board of Equalization? Seeing none, so we will adjourn at nine twenty-six as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Help her and her, help ourselves, eh?
Todd, good morning.
Good morning.
While we have a moment, belated condolences for the loss of your father. I enjoyed reading the article.
They are. Good eye for detail.
If I'm ever gonna lose one state, it's a day two.
I've been double and triple checking my files before I recycle.
Is Shanta Durham head over office? Shanta Durham, what do I want? Oh, Shanta Durham, how long is she in?
Shante.
Shante.
Shanta. Shanta.
I was gonna say, because I'm not familiar with signing just usually as part of another one.
Okay, it is nine thirty. Next item on this agenda, the following planning items, and I see nine of them, is that correct, Judy?
There are quite a few.
We have several items on this particular note. First off would be reappointment of Lincoln County Planning Commission members and Lincoln County Board of Adjustment members, is that correct?
That is correct. Judy Clark, Planning Administrator. So we do have, each Planning Commission member is up for three-year terms. They can be reappointed until the end of time if they wish. But the three that are up for reappointment is Brent Rogo, Zach Eikoff, and Aaron Edwards. And then on the Board of Adjustment, it's Frank Fleece and John McNeil. And Planning staff does recommend the reappointments.
Okay, should we take care, can we take care of those in one group or do we need to do two?
Two, separate boards.
Okay. So Brent Rogo and.
Zach Eikoff.
Zach Eikoff and.
Aaron Edwards, and that is for the Planning Commission.
Okay. Colleagues.
Chairman, would move to reappoint Brent Rogo, Zach Eikoff, and Aaron Edwards to the Lincoln County Planning Commission for a three-year term. Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I would point out that these three are very reliable on showing up to the meetings, probably the most reliable. Done a good job. Done a great job. Yep.
Any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Williams.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Luler. Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Okay, and the Lincoln County Board of Adjustment members again, would you tell us those?
Frank Fleece, excuse me, and John McNeil. Those names probably aren't extremely familiar because the Board of Adjustment tends to not meet very frequently.
Which is a sign that.
Our regulations are good.
Very good.
With that said, Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we reappoint Frank Fleece and John McNeil to the Lincoln County Board of Adjustment for how many term?
Three.
For a three-year term.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Luler.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley. Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Got that taken care of, thank you.
Perfect.
Next item is to discuss and consider action on a request by Prairie View Acres Second Subdivision Homeowners Association, Inc. to accept dedication and adoption of Sagebrush Drive, Old Barn Road, Sagebrush Trail, and Windmill Road, part of Prairie View Acres Second Subdivision.
Okay, attached, you should all find a copy of my review comments and then a copy of the subdivision highlighted in yellow are the roads that the county would be adopting if approved. There's a letter from the Homeowners Association with signatures and then also a letter from T.C. Engineering back in 2016 verifying that the roads were built county standards. After discussion with Jason Schultz, the Homeowners Association left off Windmill Road to be adopted. But after I spoke with Jason, the road superintendent, it seemed that we should probably just go ahead and adopt that also, even though that wasn't at their request. Jason has visited with the Homeowners Association and since then, the Homeowners Association have repaired the roads as requested and the roads currently meet Lincoln County Department Road Standards. On August 9th, 2023, Lincoln County Planning Commission unanimously approved to accept and adopt Sagebrush Drive, Old Barn Road, Sagebrush Trail, Windmill Road, all part of Prairie View Acres Second Subdivision and forwarded the recommendation for approval to the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to help. There are a few members of the property owners out in the area if you want to talk to them. And Jason is here.
Mike? I would have a question. Are the roads gravel now?
No, they are paved.
Okay. And it was done in 2016?
Yes, originally.
Okay, Jason.
Please come forward, Jason, thanks.
Jason Schultz, Lincoln County Highway Superintendent.
I'm, the asphalt?
Yeah.
Was the asphalt thickness that we require now, and have we had a chance to court to check and see where we're at?
Uh, we have a court, but we're satisfied with TC's report of when it was constructed. Yeah, anything we looked at and any concerns that we voiced, they did a wonderful job of repairing anything that was deficient in our minds. So, yeah, Roads Department, we support it.
One question, go ahead, thank you.
Any other questions for either Judy or Jason?
I just have a question for Tyler.
Tyler.
Tyler, is this consistent with what we've done, previous history here with the acceptance of the.
Fairway. Fairway Estates.
Thank you, Fairway Estates.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I need. They understand right of way and.
Yes.
The landscaping that sometime tends to croach into the right of way and.
Yep. Yep.
Okay. Or it was on the last time that we did this, so.
Ditches seem to be functional.
Yes, yeah, everything was built very well. Drainage is very good around there, so, yeah, we don't have any concerns or issues with any of it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I will make a motion that we approve Prairie View Acres Second Subdivision Homeowners Association request to dedicate their roads, Sagebrush Drive, Old Barn Road, Sagebrush Trail, and Windmill Road as part of the Prairie View Acres Second Subdivision to the County Roads Department.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Except for it would be dedicated to Lincoln County.
To Lincoln County.
Your department would be the one to take care of it.
You're bringing the snow off of them, aren't you?
Yes, we will.
Okay, any other discussion? Rule call, please.
Luler.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. So is there.
They will come back in the future with the subdivision that dedicates the roads.
Okay. Super, thank you.
Gentlemen, it was a pleasure working with you guys.
Thanks for all your help, Jason. Thanks for all your help, we appreciate it.
Appreciate everything you guys did out there.
Okay. Next item on these planning items, we have a public hearing. This public hearing is to discuss and consider action on an application by Danny Carlisle for a conditional use permit to allow a second dwelling on property located at 20095 East Marcia Avenue, north of Maxwell, Nebraska, in an A1 agricultural district on property described as Lot 1 Carlisle Replat, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Okay, and you should have all received a copy of the review comments. Attached to that is the resolution that was passed by the Lincoln County Planning Commission, a site plan showing the proposed construction, and then a location map. On August 9th, 2023, the Lincoln County Planning Commission unanimously passed a resolution to deny the application based on number three of Article 5, Section 504, minimum standards of the Lincoln County zoning regulations. The use shall be in harmony with the character of the area and most appropriate use of the land. So this is a resolution that is to deny the application. Tyler, I believe, did set around some, since you guys are really new to conditional uses, send around some sample motions, sorry, some sample motions. It is really important when you do these to give findings of fact, and that's what's attached with those motions. In the future, if you want me to continue doing those, I will attach them to the review comments. But those can help Tyler if he ever goes to court.
Much appreciated.
You're going to keep that.
There's no doubt about that, huh?
And I do have to tell you, they have been tested in court and they have helped the attorney win, so, yes.
I appreciate you doing this very much.
I don't believe the applicant is here, but I can try to help you answer any questions if you have any.
Can you tell me again the reason that the Planning Commission Board denied that?
What they listed for the reason is based on number three of Article 5, Section 5.04, and it says the use shall be in harmony and character with the area and the most appropriate use of the land. That is why they made the motion to deny.
Found upon that? I hope you wish not to.
So this gentleman was issued a building permit back in, well, a few years back, probably 2018. And that's a copy of the site plan that you have. And he started building a outbuilding, an accessory structure. Halfway through the project, so to drive out there, this accessory structure is halfway built, doesn't have doors on it or whatever. He decided he wanted to turn that accessory structure into a living quarters. I gave him two choices. He could either apply for a conditional use to have the second dwelling on the same lot or he could subdivide the property. The Planning Commission felt that it would be better for them to subdivide the property.
Chairman, thank you.
Yep.
Colleagues. Any other questions for Judy Clark? So our motion will either be to approve the application or deny it.
Correct.
And either direction that is taken based on one of those statements.
Yep.
Yes, we're gonna have a public hearing in this regard. It is, we will open the public hearing at nine forty-two. For anyone that wishes to speak in this regard. Do you have any of your Planning Commission members?
Present? No.
Anyone wishing to speak in this regard in regards to the application by Danny Carlisle for a conditional use permit to allow a second dwelling on property located at 20095 East Marcia Avenue, north of Maxwell, in an A1 agricultural district on property described as Lot 1 Carlisle Replat, Lincoln County, Nebraska. Hearing and seeing no one come forward, I would welcome my motion to.
Motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Rule call, please.
Burns.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Here. College.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to deny the conditional use application by Danny Carlisle for a conditional use permit to allow a second dwelling on property located at 20095 East Marcia Avenue, north of Maxwell, Nebraska, in an A1 agricultural district on property described as Lot 1 Carlisle Replat, Lincoln County, Nebraska, because said conditional use application does not meet the minimum standards stated in Section 5.04, Article 5 of the Lincoln County zoning regulations based on the following factual findings to wit, being that the application has not met the following requirements in Article 5, Section 5.04 of the minimum standards of Lincoln County zoning regulations, particularly number three of Article 5, Section 5.04, minimum standards of the Lincoln County zoning regulations. The use shall be in harmony with the character of the area and most appropriate use of the land. That would be my motion.
We have a motion to deny.
Second.
And we have a second, any other discussion? Seeing none, rule call, please.
Burns.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Aye. Most. Okay. We have a public hearing. Excuse me. To discuss and consider action on an application by Tall Grass Energy, Lacey, and North Platte Livestock Feeders, Lee Sor, for a conditional use permit to allow construction of a new facility to support Tall Grass's ongoing pipeline operations located in an A1 agricultural district on property described as lying in the northwest core of Section 23 Township 10 North, range 30 West of the 6 PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Okay, and you should have all received a copy of the review comments. Attached to that is a location map, site plan. Attached to that is a location map, um, site plans, and, um, some of the particular, uh, construction on the site. On August 9th, 2023, the Lincoln County Planning Commission unanimously passed a resolution recommending approval of the conditional use permit to allow construction of the new facility to support Tallgrass's ongoing pipeline operations. Um, with this one, they did put the condition that gravel roads in the area be returned to original condition if any damage occurs. Um, planning staff has no objections to the proposed project. I do have the applicant in the audience, if you have any additional questions.
I have a question for the applicant, but, you know, I haven't read through this, but what does that mean, uh, return to it? In other words, if there's an approved county road, we have some damages to the land, it has to go back to the natural way it was before, into grass or whatever? Is that what that says?
That's probably more of a Planning Commission question. They just questioned how much truck traffic was going to be on the road. They just wanted to make sure that, once their construction was completed, if they damaged the road, that they take care of it.
So, before the board asks a bunch more questions, I'm going to remind you that your role in the process is to make a decision about the application, not present the case for the applicant. You have to make the decision based on the information you're given.
Does it say in here, does it clarify that further than that? Can I read that?
So basically, on the resolution that was passed, um, it should, and I don't think I attached that to that, but, um, the way that the Planning Commission passed their resolution, they said, "We approve the conditional use, um, with the condition that the, um, with the condition," and where is it at? I'm reading the wrong one. "With the condition that if any damage occurs to the road due to additional construction traffic, that it be returned, the road be returned to the original condition." So that is the condition that Planning Commission added.
They added that to the...
To.
Tyler, can we ask which road it is and describe that road as it currently is?
I think that would probably be helpful. I'm simply trying to point out to the board that it's not your role to make their case for them.
Okay.
The road is East Community Center Line, East Community Center Road. It is a gravel road. Um, the Planning Commission just wanted to make sure that there was no damage that occurred because of truck traffic.
Jason, could you, uh, address to me or to this board what the condition of that road is today?
Uh, yeah, I think it's a pretty decent road. I guess we'd probably have to go out and do a, an actual survey and get a, a better idea of the condition.
That would be, uh, appropriate, would it not, Tyler, for them to have a picture or some mental image of what the road looks like prior to this, if it were to be approved?
Well, at this point, that's simply a recommendation from planning. The board does not, this board does not have to take that recommendation. Right. It's not my thing.
Yeah, you can get rid of that recommendation. You can just approve it as is.
I have a question for the applicant. Can you describe these structures?
Um, so, yeah, it's a, um, so there's a couple existing facilities on both of these projects. Um, it's essentially a, uh, a hot tap into the existing, um, Rockies Express Pipeline, the Rex Line, and, um, and then also a heater and, uh, an overprotection regulator. And this is all contained within a fenced area.
Within a fenced area.
Is it all within one building?
Correct, uh, one facility site, not a, not an actual building, so the above-ground equipment.
Okay. And this is part of the conversion project?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so it appears to me then, and what we need to do then is open this public hearing, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so at 9:50, we will open this public hearing to discuss and consider action on an application by Tallgrass Energy, LEC, and North Flat Livestock Feeders, LESOR, for a conditional use permit to allow construction of a new facility to support Tallgrass's ongoing pipeline operations located in an A1 agricultural district on property described as lying in the northwest quarter of Section 23 Township 10 North, range 30 West of the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska. So at 9:50, we will open this public hearing. Do we have anyone in the room that wishes to speak in regard to this application by Tallgrass Energy?
Just wanted to ask the question, how much, uh, truck traffic do you anticipate for the construction of the facility?
So, uh, they're anticipating 15 at the, uh, the peak high, 15 total trucks during. Start off a little slower, then 15 during, about the middle of the construction, and then taper off towards the end.
And what's your duration?
Um, it's a good question. Um... I can...
15 trucks per day?
At, that's at the peak.
At the peak, okay.
At the peak during construction. Let's see, three months, maybe?
Three months in total?
In total. That could vary, and, um, can I just add that? Obviously, we can do a pre-construction meeting with you guys, if that's something you would, um, like to sit down and do as well.
Yeah, I, I think I would recommend that, just to, I guess, talk to you about the condition of the roads, because not, not much truck traffic on one of our roads in that area might have a significant impact on it.
Sure.
Thank you, Jason, for being polite.
What is the, you'd say a hot tap?
Correct. So on that one, they'll, they will tap into the, uh, existing express line, uh, and then they will, then, get their gas from that line to still provide for vendors, uh, that utilize the line that's getting converted.
So is there gonna be more truck traffic after this?
That I do not know for sure. Um, I'm not sure.
It's not some, like, trucks going to fill up?
Right. I'm, I'm assuming there's an existing, uh, pipeline that is already at these facilities that takes it to vendors from there.
Any other questions? Anybody else wish to speak in this public hearing? Your name, sir?
My name is Austin Bruin.
Austin Bruin. Would you please sign in for us at the...
Yes, sir.
And your colleague in the back, would you please tell us his name?
His name is Travis Sinclair.
Travis Sinclair. Anyone else wish to speak at this public hearing? Hearing none, I will close this public, or I'm gonna ask for a motion to close this public hearing at 9:54.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brens?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Ruler?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. So we have two options on this motion.
Yep.
Motion to approve or deny.
That is correct.
And the Planning Commission has recommended approval with the conditional...
With the condition that the road be returned to, um, how it was before the project began. You can keep that conditional use, and please, Tyler, jump in and correct me if I'm wrong. You can keep that conditional use, you can get rid of it, you can add your own.
My comment was going to be that in the past, when we've had construction projects that increased considerably truck traffic over roads that typically didn't see that kind of truck traffic, which this is one of them. That, we have a requirement of that contractor to maintain that road to some degree, whether it be a dust control, whatever that might be. So I think that's a conversation that, um, I don't know that I'm... I think that's a conversation probably that would be, would require the input of, of our roads people, but I think that's something that we ought to consider right now, as to, uh, if we're looking at a three-month construction period with trucks over a road, uh, what does that do to our maintenance, what does that do to our time, what does that do to our man tower? And is there a way, as part of this conditional use permit, that we have some language in there for that maintenance that doesn't get us into liability problems through our legal department? I guess that's a long way of saying it, but Tyler, um, do you have any maybe language? I mean, my language was going to be something that, uh, in cooperation with the Lincoln County Roads Department, Highway Superintendent, they, uh, that the contractor or the applicant, uh, work out a sufficient maintenance program in conjunction with the county attorney's office, uh, period, during the construction.
I think that's a really good point, because returning it to its prior condition would be great, but during that three-month or so process, we may have some residents that want to use that road.
Or we tear it the heck up, and somebody goes in and has a wreck, and, well, you knew they were gonna be building it, you know, so...
What would that condition, I'm, I'm kind of thinking out loud here, what would that extra condition be?
Well, I, I would, I would think the condition would have something to do with, uh, uh, maintenance to a... I, I don't want to say, because I'm not an attorney, but it, it certainly would have to do with, uh, maintaining that road in a safe and operable condition, because we're up here with our equipment, they're down there working every day. If put a big gouge or a rut in a road or a truck goes through, we can't get down there. A car comes through, hits that, has a wreck, rolls it, kills two little kids, there's a heck of a liability. So somehow, I think that language needs to be put in there, um, and I'm not sure I'm smart enough right now to do that. And that's the reason I said that, in conjunction with our legal department or our roads department, that they, we work out some kind of an appropriate maintenance plan during construction.
I want to ask of Tallgrass, do you have, would you have maintenance, road maintenance, uh, equipment at the site?
Correct, yes. Um, and throughout the construction process, obviously, if there is any damage throughout, obviously, they won't wait till the end of construction to complete those, um, fixes, if you will. If there is damage during construction, they will obviously do whatever they can to get those fixed in a timely manner.
And I would suggest that it would be best to coordinate with our roads department that if you can't handle it, you let them know.
Correct. And I think just being in discussion with them prior to the construction and then throughout would be very beneficial, too.
Tyler, do you have some comments?
I would suggest to whomever makes the motion to approve this, if you're going to do so, you adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation that they restore the road to the condition that they found it in at the end of the project. I would also suggest that you add another condition, uh, that they have a pre-construction and post-construction meeting with the Lincoln County Roads Department to assess the road. And a third condition, that they shall maintain the road in good condition during the pendency of construction. And hopefully, somebody's writing that down. I think those are probably all fairly reasonable conditions.
Yes, and I think you would appro...
I agree, I agree.
Yes, okay.
For clarification purposes, how much road are we talking? Half a mile, 10 miles?
Um, I think the, this is the North Flat.
This is the North.
Um, I was kind of looking at the map there. Depending on, on where those trucks come from, you know, whether north or south, I think the main road, that being East Community Center Road, um...
So you're looking at one mile, two, two miles?
Two miles off of the, uh, off the highway there.
You'll come off of 83 going east, south of the feed yard, correct?
I would assume that's the best, best line of track.
You know, the, the, next time, before your company throws you to the wolves, I, I would take a look at the wolf pack before and be prepared.
Yes.
All I'm saying.
It's, it's my first time, so my apologies.
Okay.
You're better at language than I am.
Everybody's looking at me, okay?
Chairman, I would move that we approve the conditional use application by Tallgrass Energy, the LEC, and North Flat Livestock Feeders, the LESOR, for conditional use permit to allow construction of a new facility to support Tallgrass's ongoing pipeline operations located in an A1 agricultural district on property described as lying in the northwest quarter of Section 23 Township 10 North, range 30 West of the 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and all elements of the application are complied with, and the following conditions added, being that, uh, the approval of the conditional use, uh, ch-ch-ch, bear with me, that the road, Community, Community Center Road, be brought to its original, to the state, original to, uh, construction beginning, that a second, uh, condition be added, that a pre-construction and a post-construction meeting be had with our Lincoln County Highway Superintendent and his crews to, uh, assess the condition of the road prior to construction and post-construction. And a third condition, uh, be added, that a maintenance, uh, plan for Community Center Road, be made with the Lincoln County Highway Superintendent to ensure that the road is maintained through the construction phase. That would be my motion.
Second.
That's just what I was gonna say. A second motion, right here. Oh, that's right, please.
Commissioner Williams, read you to it.
Oh, okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brens?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Hugley?
Aye.
Ruler?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, the fifth item on this, uh, planning, uh, agenda is a public hearing to discuss action, to discuss and consider action on an application by Tallgrass Energy, LEC, and Uplinger Feeders, LESOR, for a conditional use permit to allow construction of a new facility, of a new facility to support Tallgrass's ongoing pipeline operations located in an A1 agricultural district on property described as lying in the northwest quarter of Section 13 Township 10 North, range 33 West of 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska.
Okay, and again, this is going to be the same project, basically a similar project as the one that you just discussed. It's just in a different location. On August 9th, 2023, Lincoln County Planning Commission unanimously passed a resolution recommending approval of the conditional use, um, to support Tallgrass Energy's ongoing pipeline operations. You should see a copy of the site plan, um, also a location map, and then the resolution. This one, Planning Commission did not add any conditions to the road. As you can see from the site plan, the access would be directly from, um, Highway 23, I believe.
And how far north off of Highway 23 would it?
It abuts Highway 23.
It abuts Highway 23. Sir, would you state your name again?
Austin Bruin.
Okay, uh, it's, uh, 10:04, I will open up a public hearing to discuss, consider action on an application by Tallgrass Energy, LEC, and Uplinger Feeders, LESOR, for a conditional use permit to allow construction of a new facility to support Tallgrass's ongoing pipeline operations on property that we described just a few minutes ago. 10:04, we'll open this public hearing. Jason, do you or Brian have any, uh, concern with this, uh, project? There's no county roads, good roads involved on this. Did say that the Planning Commission did not put any extra conditions.
No.
They did recommend approval.
They did recommend approval, but they did not add any additional conditions.
And Austin, this would be a, uh, similar kind of a facility with a large number of trucks?
Correct, so it, it's exactly the same, uh, on both projects. Same process as, as hot tapping into the existing line and then... line and then the exact same equipment would get with.
Will these be, be in work in progress simultaneously or following one another?
It's a good question. I would assume that this would be in conjunction with both at the same time.
Anyone else? Anybody wish to speak in regards during this public hearing? Austin, tell me again your last name. I'm trying to.
Bruin, B-R-U-H-N.
B-R-U-H-N?
Correct.
Austin, A.
U-S-T-I-N.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone wish to speak at this public hearing? Hearing none, seeing none?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Any other discussion? A motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brens?
Aye.
Wular?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Woodruff?
All right. So at 10:06, we will close this public hearing. Colleagues, do you see need for any extra conditions to be added to this?
I see none.
The planning commission added the extra condition of the gravel roads on this one? Is that what I'm reading?
No.
No, they did not.
That was the one that.
I apologize if I wrote it wrong on there, but no, they did not add any additional conditions on this one.
Ready for a motion?
I am, sir.
Chairman, I would move to approve the conditional use application to Tallgrass Energy, L C, and Oplinger Feeders, L S O R, for conditional use permit to allow construction of a new facility to support Tallgrass's ongoing pipeline operations located in an A1 agricultural district. Property, on property described as lying in the northwest quarter of Section 13, Township 10 North, Range 33 West of 6th PM, Lincoln County, Nebraska. The factual findings to wit, the application complies with current Lincoln County zoning regulations. In addition, the application complies with Lincoln County subdivision regulations. And third, the application is in conformance with the current Lincoln County Conference plan and Lincoln County zoning map. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the application, this application by Tallgrass Energy. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Weems?
Aye.
Brens?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Wular?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Thank you, sirs. Okay. Sixth item on your list, Judy. We have a public hearing to discuss and consider action on a resolution for an amendment to Lincoln County, Nebraska zoning regulations, Article 2, Section 2.03 definitions, and Article 8 to add Sections 8.15 through 8.15.02, mining and data centers.
Okay. So this is something really new, crypto mining and data centers, something that we haven't dealt a lot with. So we didn't have any regulations in our zoning regulations for use of property for crypto mining and data centers. And I will tell you upfront, I knew absolutely nothing about crypto mining.
You're welcome.
Until I started doing a little bit of research. So what we came up with is the proposed, they're very little, it's not a lot, but the one thing that Planning Commission was a little bit concerned of is they are, crypto mines are energy suckers and they have loud fans because they are big computer boxes, so they have these fans that go all the time. So in the regulations, you'll see a little bit of a setback to keep the sound down and a limit of 55 dBA for decibel levels when you can hear it standing at the property line. So we did not completely come up with these on our own. The best way to do regulations is to borrow from other communities, so that is what we did. This is very similar to Dawson County with our own little additions on it. On August 9th, 2023, Lincoln County Planning Commission unanimously approved the resolution recommending approval of the amendments to the Lincoln County zoning regulations. So you should have a copy of both the resolution and the proposed regulations. The one thing I do want to say is that we kept crypto mining and data centers separate because they are, they do have a definite difference. And especially data centers, like if you would take a big company like the hospital, they have a data center in their basement, which doesn't do the same thing as a crypto mine would.
It's behind the carbines. Okay. Okay. So at 10:11, I will open this public hearing to discuss and consider action on a resolution for an amendment to Lincoln County, Nebraska zoning regulations, Article 2, Section 2.03 definitions, and Article 8 to add Sections 8.15 through 8.15.02, crypto mining and data centers. So at 10:11, I will open this public hearing. Anybody in the audience wish to speak in regards to this resolution of an amendment to the Lincoln County, Nebraska zoning regulations as described by planning administrator Judy Clark? Hearing done? Seeing no one come forward?
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Brens?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Wular?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. So at 10:12, we will close this public hearing.
Do we have a resolution?
Do we have a resolution number? We have one here from.
Planning.
Planning. From the plan. Yeah. Planning Commission is required to pass a resolution. I don't know what, if you guys have to pass a resolution or if you can just adopt it.
Just make a motion.
Adopt. Let me adopt their resolution. Tyler?
Let me read it.
Judy, do we have somebody expressing interest in putting a crypto mining?
Um, we've had people call in the past. There's been some discussion with some of the electrical providers, but nothing has came forward.
No permits have been requested.
My understanding that potential players in this space got wind that we were in the works of fine tuning our zoning and these regulations, and so they've held off until we get all that figured out.
Have a public hearing. We'll have a resolution for it next week.
We will have a resolution on our agenda next week.
Perfect.
Well, we need to have a public hearing again.
No, we already have the public hearing.
Okay, great. Thank you. So that will be tabled until next week. Thank you. Okay. Next item, discuss and consider postponing the public hearing on amendments to Lincoln County zoning regulations, Article 8, Sections 8.12 through 8.12.06, solar energy. I actually put this on the agenda. We have undertaken the effort to do as much onsite inspection and research as we possibly can prior to these very important items. So I am suggesting that we postpone the public hearing that was set for August 28th to the forepart of October to allow us not only do those inspections and research, but also to get through the very busy budgeting process.
Mr. Chairman, that was going to be my request that if we did postpone this, that we push until after budget, simply because that's going to take quite a bit of our time and this is an important issue.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that we give the appropriate consideration to both the budget and to this topic, so.
And in no way is this a reflection that we feel as though this solar energy project is not worthy of our consideration. In fact, quite the contrary. We want to have plenty of time to get as much information gathered and onsite visits as possible so that we are best able to address that issue, so.
And when was that scheduled? Next week?
It was scheduled for the August 28th.
Next week? Oh, no, the 28th.
Two weeks from now.
Thank you.
But I am suggesting that we put that in the first meeting in October. Is that possible?
Yep. There's not an option.
Okay. What date would that be, please?
The 2nd.
October 2.
I would assume 10:00 AM.
I think both at the same time, didn't think you knew that.
Yep.
I would accept, I would ask for a motion and a second.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we postpone the public hearing on amendments to the Lincoln County zoning regulations, Article 8, Section 8.12 through, Section 8.12 dash, or 06, concerning solar energy to Aug, October 2 at 10:00 AM.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Please.
Brens?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Wular?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Okay. Next item, eighth and next to the last, discuss and consider postponing the public hearing on amendments to Lincoln County zoning regulations, Article 2, Section 2.03 definitions, and Article 8, Section 8.07 through 8.08.06, small wind energy systems and commercial slash utility grade wind energy systems. Same comments as what I made in regards to the previous item. Commissioner Weems and I did visit one wind farm, I guess that I called. We did that last week, made a personal visit, very educational and enlightening. And I want to, for the same reasons, allow other members to make that opportunity to gain that experience and as much information as possible and to avoid the budget system, the budget season coming up this month of September. So there again, I would like to, I would suggest that we have this in conjunction with the previous.
I know that you and Commissioner Weems went last week. I know Commissioner Wular, you were planning on going with Commissioner Hughley.
Yes, I got confirmation from Carly this morning that Wednesday morning we'll work and I to go tour the facility. And also the mayor of Sydney, Brad Sherman, is arranging like a brown bag lunch meeting with people in the community so we can have an opportunity to talk to people from every perspective.
So we have to, I have to take Monday Wednesday?
No, they'll get it.
I just wanted to find out the date that you were going because I plan on scheduling a trip.
So we are going Wednesday morning and Wednesday afternoon.
Okay, super. Again, we are not sliding these topics at all. In fact, quite the contrary. So colleagues.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we postpone the public hearing on amendments to the Lincoln County zoning regulations, Article 2, Section 2.03 definitions, and Article 8, Section 8.07 through 8.08.06, small wind energy systems and commercial slash utility grade energy systems to October 2 at 10:00 AM, immediately following the solar energy.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brens?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Wular?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. Okay. Next item, close session to discuss strategy with respect to imminent litigation.
Yes, sir. This is on here because of me.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Clark.
I would make a motion that we go into closed session to discuss with respect to imminent litigation. And I'll let you name the people remaining in the room.
I would second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Hughley?
Aye.
Brens?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Wular?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye. And remaining in the room would be the five commissioners, Tyler Volkmar, Judy Clark, anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay. So at 10:20, we will go into closed session.
Just curious, Michael, are you going to the wind farm that's south of Sydney near the state line?
Yes.
What do we always see on the road?
Peets Colorado.
Peets?
Peets.
Peets.
Thank you, Raleigh. We've got one more to go. Thank you, Raleigh. Put that on Tyler's bill.
I will.
Can't blame him for trying.
Uh. I think there's a button. 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 Uh. I think there's a button.
For all of us.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Well, maybe Raleigh did and they just didn't make it back. I don't know, just saying. Just saying. Mr. Brunson will be back shortly.
We're taking up all the morning anyway. What's another minute?
Yeah, that's right.
I haven't been to you for a minute.
Well, we're gonna wait for him anyway.
So we're gonna wait a minute anyway.
You ready for a motion?
Okay, I would entertain a motion to come out of closed session.
Chairman, I would move to come out of closed session at 10:41.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to come out of closed session. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye, Hughley.
Aye.
Aye, okay, next item on our agenda. Thanks for hanging around, Brandon. Receive bids for a multipurpose building for Region 51 Emergency Management and other county offices. Do we have any bids? Three. Joe, would you be, do the honors open a little?
I would.
Good morning, Brandon.
Good morning.
You got a process here. We should probably get all of them open and then we go through them one at a time, right?
Brandon, will you hit those mics? Please, thank you.
Okay, we have three bids here. First proposal is from Wayne Dowhauer Construction. We have a AIA document A310. Which is the, is that the bond?
I think it's probably a bid bond, I'm guessing.
Yes, it is. Bid bond, okay, I see that now. Signed and sealed. Okay, this is for provide labor materials, equipment. Spex on the concrete, it's a pole building. Walls. Included, project is figure tax exempt. Architect and or engineering fees are not included except as stated above. This is for a sum total of $409,200. Four oh nine two zero zero. We'll keep those kind of in order there. Is there anything else I need to mention on that?
The dimensions here. That's what I'm looking for, total square feet. I guess for the record, you can note that they specify it's 3,500 pound concrete. For the slab. Fifteen mil vapor barrier. As you said, it's a pole building. R19 bad insulation, R30 blown insulation in the ceiling. Metal roof and wall panels, so pole building but with metal sheeting. Two by 16 foot rain or overhead door. With an over, with an electric operator opener, additional ten, or two, actually 10 foot two by 12 foot overhead doors as well. Metal doors for frames walk in. With hardware. Painted plywood, painted plywood walls as shown. And two Daken heat pumps for the environmental control request. That was the shown power of those units, high bay light fixtures, LEDs, and 100 amp service. Electrical service panel.
Okay. That's the first bid we've
That's Dowhauer, yes.
Okay, second bid is from AGC Ackerman General Contracting, North Platte. Bid bond is accompanying the bid. And this bid is scope of work for finish all required permits, labor, material and equipment to wreck the new post-frame building according to the plans provided for the project. Excluded of site work plumbing, fire alarm and fire suppression system, painting. It's listed as an alternative, sealed concrete floor listed as an alternate. Painting as a base bid. Add to the base bid of $9,753. Sealed concrete floor add to the base bid of $21,370. The total price excluding those that I just gave you additions was $402,615.72. Four oh two six one five point seven two with those alternative bids. Painting of $9,753. Sealed concrete, $21,370.
Can we give that aggregate figure again?
Without the alternates, it's four oh two six one five point seven two from AGC, North Platte, Nebraska. Anything I missed on there, I think that's it. I think you pretty well covered that one. Okay, third bid is from RMV Construction LLC, Carney, Nebraska. Project is 153 foot by 60 foot by 18 foot post-frame building. Dirt work, there's a $10,000 allowance, concrete, wet building, post-frame structure with pre-engineered wood trusses and columns. Exterior doors by wet building, steel roof and siding, 29 gauge, three overhead garage doors. Many split air conditioners, concrete slab with granular fill, electrical attached and mechanical attached. I have attached here from Coal Electric Company, Mason City, Nebraska, and I also have heating and air from RUTS. But this total bid. Okay, qualifications, I should say, state first, no winter conditions, pricing is for commercial building, pricing good until 07/26/23. This was submitted on 6/26/23. So it's priced for 30 days. Joe, would I, could I assume that this would be for 30 days from when this date is?
Is that assumed, is that a legal term? I don't know, Jerry, honestly. So, I think that's something, I was gonna, whatever we do, I just gonna recommend the building committee along with legal, look at these and try to analyze them anyway, so. I honestly don't know, Jerry, I'm sorry.
Okay, so with those qualifications, the total price on this bid is Four three six comma seven three six.
I'm very pleased they're all within a relatively close proximity. Whether that's good or bad, I mean, at least they were bidding on the same building.
Yep.
Okay. Next process. Tyler, do you look at these? Joe, do you look at these?
What I would recommend is that we acknowledge receipt of bids. And I don't even know that we can acknowledge the apparent low bidder because of, I don't understand sealed concrete. Are they just talking about the seal or the So what I would recommend, it's just a recommendation that we acknowledge opening of the bids and that we have our building committee review those along with legal counsel and proceed from there, maybe bring back a recommendation to the board or whatever. Just my way.
In conjunction with Brandon Meyer to see if this actually fits the specifications of what you're looking for.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a good suggestion is. Okay. I would echo Commissioner Hughley's, we appreciate the bids being made. Thank you, gentlemen, for your presence in the room. We appreciate the interest and it's like you thought this over fairly well, looked at what we're needing for our building, and I am going to hand these back to the clerk so she has those. And I would suggest that the Building and Grounds Committee get together with Brandon and Tyler. And we review these bids and come back with a recommendation next week.
Thank you, guys.
For clarification, Commissioner Weems and myself, Commissioner Luler, on the Building and Grounds Committee.
Thank you. Thanks again, gentlemen. So we will table considering acceptance of a bid. Okay, our next item on the agenda is public hearing on application DEA M LLC Doing Businesses axes and aces for a Class C liquor license located at 675 East North Lake Road in North Platte, Nebraska. Sir. Do you state your name and sign in, please?
Brian Shimick.
Brian Shimick, yeah. You are representing axes and aces?
Yes.
Shimick. Okay.
Should be a name fairly familiar with you golfers.
Oh, that's right.
Not this summer, Joe.
Was it a little windy yesterday out at the doors?
It was.
We'll get it back to business here. Do I have him state what he's doing and then open the court thing? Maybe open up the public hearing and allow him to submit his Okay. Okay, so what we will do is at 10:53 we will open this public hearing and we will start off with Mr. Shimick, you stating what, what you're proposing to do here.
We purchased the old Car Doctor property out there. We are going to have, there's two buildings, obviously, it's a big property. The back building's gonna have, or the north, the building on the north part of the property will have three indoor pickleball courts. There'll be a 7,200 square foot beer garden separating the two buildings, and then the front building will have two golf simulators, four lanes of axe throwing and a full-service bar and grill.
So tell me where this property is again?
It's 675 North Lake Road.
It was old.
It was formerly
Whole out south there.
Yeah, it's just immediately west of Harbor Lights.
Okay, I got you now.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. So do you have a current liquor license?
We do not, we, it's in the process of being applied for. So, I've talked to Trooper Bedlin about it and so it is in the process.
So Brian, part of the public record would indicate that before us, we have copies that you have applied for a Class C liquor license, is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
So that would, Mr. Chairman, be something of note for the public hearing? That the applicant has in fact started the paperwork to apply for a liquor license for this endeavor?
Tyler, this is, we're just making a recommendation, is that correct?
Correct. After the public hearing. Also, Chairman, for the note, for the record, note that Mr. Shimick has also provided copies of their certificate or organization of their LLC. Is this properly identified as DEA M LLC?
Yeah, DEEM LLC.
DEEM LLC, so that would also be something with, for the record.
Okay. Do you think, is there anything further that you would like to add to this discussion, Mr. Shimick?
I mean, we just feel like it's a really good project for the community, it's, you know, bringing a lot of activities together in one location. It's something that's sorely needed for people who live out at the lake and in the southwest part of town, easy access. We, obviously, we want everybody from everywhere, all parts of town to come out, but it's something that's definitely needed out there. Hours of operation, we're looking at 11 a.m. to 10 p.m. most days. We may, in the summer, to accommodate the late crowds, stay open till 11 p.m. on Friday and Saturday from Memorial Day to Labor Day. We haven't 100% nailed that down yet, but normal hours of operation would be 11 a.m. to 10 p.m.
Okay, you are president of DEA M. And your vice president is?
Karen Nallett. Or she may, she may be listed as president.
No, I see you as president.
Oh, well, that's good to know.
Also for the record, your business partner Karen Nallett has also been certified as a serve safe alcohol certificate holder.
Yes, we both have completed that, we both have completed that, and then once we, yeah, once we finalize our staff hiring, all of them will go through the state-approved serve safe program.
And further, Chairman, I would note that to lend to their sincerity of the project, they also have signed a commercial lease?
Yes.
Property?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I would ask that if Kramer, Deputy Sheriff Kramer, do either one of you gentlemen have anything to add?
Nothing negative. Over to you, Joe. And it is needed out there, we have a cabin out there, it's a good place to go, and it'll really add to the atmosphere out there.
And it's a facility that's a very attractive-looking facility, nice to see it quick to use.
Yeah.
And so part of the management program too, Mr. Shimick, for the record, does we have a law enforcement officer that's involved in this, is that correct?
Lisa is a partner on the real estate, but she's not a partner on the operating company.
She will be somewhat in a position to observe.
She will be in a position to observe, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Off the record, she'll be in a position to give orders, because that's what she does.
That is a true statement, if you don't Lisa at all.
100%, yes.
Okay, Jody, anything that you would like to ask of Mr. Shimick?
I was gonna ask how his game was, but, no, really.
Ask me next summer, Joe.
No, nor the players involved, I know that they are longtime community people that have been an asset to the community and their families have been here for a long time, good people, and I wish them well in the endeavor. It's, whenever you chew off something that big, I know that the real estate was not inexpensive.
Nope.
And there's a lot of money yet to go into it, so I appreciate people willing to step up and put their money where their mouth is for this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else from this board?
Thank you for including the page about staffing.
What's that?
Thanks for including the information about staffing, because that's, looks like that's gonna be quite a few jobs that you also bring to the area.
I was gonna make a comment.
We should close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. Anyone else wish to speak in regards to this public hearing?
I was just gonna finish my comment, I would also make, I was gonna make a comment about alcohol and axes, but I've attended a couple axe throwings in different locations and that seems to be the norm, and it's very, very well policed, trust me.
Yeah.
People there do a good separation, they also watch the amount of alcohol consumed, and I know that will be the case here, so I say that more in jest than anything else.
Sure, no, yeah, there's, when you, when you sign up to throw axes, you sign a waiver, we will have a dedicated camera pointing at the axe-throwing lanes to police that as well, so.
Anyone else wish to speak in this regard? I would entertain a motion to close this public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing, second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brunson?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Luler? Aye.
Aye, so at 11:01, we will close this public hearing. Colleagues. It will be your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we make a positive recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for the application by DEEM LLC Doing Businesses axes and aces for a Class C liquor license located at 675 East North Lake Road, North Platte, Nebraska.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? On the positive recommendation to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. Roll call, please.
Brunson?
Aye.
Weems?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Luler? Aye.
Aye, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Wish you the best.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is to discuss and consider purchase of two four-wheelers for the Lincoln County Predator Control Department. Do we have any bids?
Was that Brian? Went out the back door, right?
See him out there?
So
There he comes.
Oh, here he comes.
We're a little behind on our schedule, sir. Got noticed. Just waiting for him and he ain't moving, so. Good morning, gentlemen and ladies. Would you, gentlemen, please identify yourselves for us, please?
Yeah, Jerry Feist, I work with Lincoln County Predator and Pest Control Division.
Barry Johnson, Predator and Animal Control Division.
Newly formed division, I write it.
Newly formed, yes.
Uh huh. And we're beginning the process of getting that division equipped with what they need to have.
Correct.
Their job done, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good. That's why you're here this morning.
That's why I'm here this morning. I have what we're hoping to do is get a couple of four-wheelers for the furry dog program. And we sent out a thing last week to several vendors for bids. And we heard from two of them. Budkey and Louis, we did not hear from my peers out in O'Vala. So they got the same email, the same day, the same instructions as everybody else, please respond by Friday. And we haven't heard anything, but the effort is there and it's documented.
Okay.
So we is it appropriate that I put my two cents in at this point, or do you want to review first?
Could I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Did you contact our local Kawasaki dealer?
Kawasaki only has one four-wheeler, that's all they make.
Did you contact our local Kawasaki dealer?
They make one, he's got one, that's all they make. Kawasaki don't make four-wheelers anymore.
You know, I feel bad because I can't tell you how many hundreds of thousands of dollars that company has donated to that department or different departments through the years. And it'd be nice if we could say thank you.
They never wanted a bid because they said they only had one four-wheeler. That's all they had, and that's all they make, is one four-wheeler now.
No side-by-sides, no nothing.
Each department just ordered side-by-sides from them last year that we have not taken delivery on yet.
But when I went in and asked him about bids on the job, he said that they, I told him what we're using them for, and
uh, I told him what we're using them for, and he says, well, he said, I don't think you could possibly put a bater on one of these side-by-sides, because he says, the way they're designed, and he, he just basically chugged me off, you know, so.
I wonder why that would be different, it just, it just doesn't sound right for that company, I mean, it just doesn't, I, I don't know why, but they, they have been such a partner for us in the past, and I, I would ask the Sheriff to attest to that.
Well, yeah, actually, uh, we're getting a grant, a kind of a grant, and we got a bid from them last week, we've probably got a bid from six or seven places, and they knocked $7,000 off their unit order, you can bid, so.
But that was for, those were side-by-sides?
Yeah.
And we're looking for four-wheelers?
Four-wheelers.
Less expense, more utility for what you're wanting to use them for?
Yeah.
Considerable less expense, for a four-wheeler, yes.
So do we continue?
Well, thank you, thank you.
Okay, let me go through the bids first, and then we'll ask for input.
Very good.
Uh, Budkey Powersports came to you with, uh, three different vehicles. A 2023 Polaris Sportsman 450 for $8,500 plus dock fees, so it's, uh, $8,598. They also came with a 2023 Yamaha Grizzly, I'm not sure what the size of that is.
750.
It's a 750, so that is why the price on that is $12,997. They also came to you with the Yamaha.
Same thing. Same thing, just different color.
Just different colors, a Yamaha Grizzly, uh, 750, and this is the same at $12,997. Now, three different machines.
Yes, sir.
We have.
Is this, I guess, we're, what have in stock, is that it, we can get them?
Yeah, in stock.
Thank you, Jerry.
And then we have another one from Lewis Motor Sports. We have, looks like we have four different machines here, correct?
Uh, five.
Actually.
Five, excuse me, five, I didn't add correctly. First, we have a 2022 Suzuki King Quad 500, $9,093, right? Inventory is in, in stock. There's a 2023 Suzuki King Quad 500. This is, uh, government discounts included, government services discount, brings it down to $9,414, slightly more than the machine that's a 22, this one I just quoted as a 23.
Correct.
Then we also have a, uh, another 2023 Suzuki King Quad 500, looks like just the difference in color.
Color, that's correct.
And this one, uh, that color evidently is a detractant to it, because this price comes down to $88,073.
Well, the difference, let me tell you the difference between them, one of them is painted and one of them is dyed. The, the cheaper one is already dyed into the plastic when they mold it, the color, the others are painted, their body styles put on there and they paint them, with the paint. That's, that's the difference.
Okay, so that's, the, then there's another one here, this is a 2023 Suzuki King Quad 750, and we had the, in the specs, anywhere between 450 and 750, right, or something in that range?
Correct.
So this is a 750, a much bigger machine. There are Lewis Motorsports Suzuki government discounts, government service discounts, brings it down to $9,778. And then there's a 2023 Polaris Sportsman 450. It says here, note Polaris 450 is actually a 499 CC. Again, discount applied, brings it to $8,025. My understanding is, from these notes, from Lewis Motors, all of those machines are in stock.
All except for that, uh, the Sportsman, he said that he, he might not have the other one of those, and on the front page there with the 2023 Suzuki, uh, he said that he didn't, he had sold the one he had, but he said they thought they could get them within a week.
I see.
He's got, uh, problem with most of these companies is we're having, is we're on quotas, and once they sell a machine, then they don't, they don't have a quota.
And I understand that was one of the problems with Budkey's, one of our local dealers.
Yeah, that was, he was on a quota, and he couldn't, and he did have a Yamaha 450 there, and he sold it, and so we're out of luck there.
I apologize for my earlier comments, I didn't realize that we were, I should've known, but that we were looking to get something in stock, so that explains a lot. Thanks, guys, I explained your comment very, thank you very much.
Okay, so, I read that off now, I would like to ask if the members of this board have any questions in regards to these bids?
I, I guess my question would be, we're, we're wanting to get, the department's just starting up, we're wanting to get two, so that they could be working on maybe two independently towns, or two independent places, and/or if you had a big town, one start on one end or one on the other, is that kind of a thought, Jerry?
That's, that's primarily the, the thought process from the standpoint that the window of time to effectively bait, excuse me, pre-bait and bait for prairie rodents can be very limited window, and especially this year with as much greenery as we have, those, uh, varmints have plenty to eat and would not be overly interested in our pre-bait or bait, until it gets brown and dry. So that narrows that window up, and if we're gonna have success with that program, exactly as you stated, they need to be, um, hitting the ground running, covering a lot of territory. And my understanding is we have a full list of folks interested in this program, so we anticipate for a fee.
I've got 44 listed right now.
And your list is gonna get longer, I know that.
Well, I know it is, I, I haven't even got the road department, they've got five or six guys on the list, and I haven't got them on there yet.
Okay, any.
So, and that's just the Prairie Dog, uh, management program?
That's that.
These gentlemen that we have brought on, uh, to the county, um, side from USDA, USDA did a lot more than just prairie dogs, is my understanding, and I'm just seeking clarification, we're also going to be utilizing them for Badgers and Coyotes and everything else, is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Well, and if, if we're looking at Badgers and Coyotes, then maybe we ought to look at a side-by-side. Just kidding.
We'll put that in the budget, we'll put that in the budget on your side of the ledger, is that okay? We're accepting donations from private citizens, yes.
Have you had an opportunity to look at these, that they had them on, in stock?
I, Budkeys I did, I didn't go to McCook and, and look at those, you know, I've seen them, uh, I've got two of my friends at, uh, down in Chase County that have them around their feedlots and their feed operations and stuff, one of them's got 22,000 miles on, the other one's got 20,000, and they haven't had a problem with any of one of them.
And so any of these would fit the picture that you guys are looking for?
That's kinda why we threw them out there, that size, you know, was just to try to keep them under cost, but yet big enough to utilize what we need them for.
So Jerry, you guys have elaborated on this, so we've read them off, Chairman's read them off, so do you have a priority list or a recommendation?
I do, I do, thanks for asking, Kent. Thanks for asking, Kent. Uh, first of all, note, uh, the, uh, the Budkey, the 1675 quote on top is basically the same as Louis's last machine. They're both Polaris 450s, and Budkey is about $600 higher on, on, on what's basically the same machine. Now Budkey doesn't offer government discounts unless you take three units, so that could make a difference there, but Budkey on that comparable Polaris is 600 higher than Louis, and I.
Three, three units, maybe this is your time, you put the money.
Well, yeah.
No, let's, no.
All right, I'll shut up. But, 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 so I'm, I'm thinking, I'm, I'm setting Budkey off to the side, because he's 600 higher on the comparable machine.
And he doesn't have two of them?
Correct.
Do we get a volume discount at Louis? Or has he already figured?
Per unit, per unit, he's already figured that in there.
Okay, super.
Yeah, my, uh, the, uh, I, I got a bunch of notes on here, on mine here, gentlemen, that 2022 camouflage, the first item listed, the 9093, is $230 higher for the paint job than the last one, I'm leaning toward the last unit, the, the third one listed there, the 20, uh, the first page, the bottom one, I like that for $8863.
King Quad.
It's, it's cheaper, excuse me?
The King Quad 500?
Uh, yes, sir. Yeah, 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 it's, uh, you know, the camouflage one, the 2022 would be prettier, but it'll cost $230 for a paint job, and I, we can't really justify that, or I can't.
Thank you.
Um, it's, yeah, so the only question is gonna be, in my mind, if you look at the last unit there, that Suzuki King Quad 500, and then the last one on page two, that Polaris, that Polaris comes in, uh, $838 lower than the Suzuki. Now, take that times two, that's 1676. If we're looking purely from a money standpoint, then the Polaris would be the way to go. I personally, and I don't know, looking, looking at the reviews and so forth, I would go out on a limb and say the Suzuki's a better machine. I would prefer that last one there on page one, but if we got two, it would cost 1676 additional above the Polaris, so that, that's where we're.
And you're basing your choice on personal experience of those machines?
Y- yes, and also reading reviews, that we have spent quite a bit of time, including this morning again, that the Suzuki is tougher, is, is what it amounts to, it's tougher.
Has it got a more advanced suspension, or independent suspension, is that what you're referring to?
Well, the Suzuki, it's got, uh, the brake system.
Let me finish these.
Okay. Yeah, the, the Polaris says it rides real well, but it's a little, the suspension is too soft for heavy-duty work, and, and my going over the prairie, the, the prairie dog towns are rough with the mounds and, and the terrain, so I'm.
Suspension's a key element?
Yeah, yeah.
Consideration's what I'm getting at.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
And then the, uh, we're gonna have a bater mounted on the front, and then probably an extra bag on the back, so it's gonna be heavy, and, uh, the, the Polaris rigs that the suspension's a little soft for heavy-duty use. I think it's a beautiful machine to run around trails with, as for a family.
Okay, Barry, you had something to add to that, too?
Well, they're just, uh, the only difference I could see basically in them is Suzuki brake system runs in an oil bath, it's not exposed to the elements, it runs in an oil bath on them, uh, they both got the power steering and everything, other than, uh, the ride that, uh, that they were talking about with the Polaris, but, uh, you know, basically that's the only difference as far as, uh, internal makeup of it is.
Okay, question?
I, I will add that if, if, if the commission wants us to go with the Polaris, that's fine, it's gonna be, you know, we'll, we'll do, we'll work with it, because it would save 1676.
Uh, it is our job to recommend, or, uh, to choose the most appropriate bid, not always the lowest bid.
Understood.
Is that correct?
The actual is the lowest responsible.
Responsible bid, and it sounds as though, from the stand, standpoint of the suspension and the brake system, that's something that needs to be taken into consideration.
Yep.
I'd make a recommendation, maybe we go with one a each, and we, we try it out. Um, it's not like we're gonna be racing these things.
No, no, no.
And that's where the, I mean, that's where the suspension really comes into play, is riding them right, right?
Yeah.
Granted, we're gonna have the weight and the chemical and everything on there, and your supplies, but you're not full mooring over these prairie dog.
No, no, Chris.
You're no responsible rate of speed, is what I would assume, so.
That, that's right.
I don't know that that, that's really a make or break, in my opinion.
Uh, from the standpoint, I'll get right to you, but, uh, yeah, very good point, but, uh, and it's nice to maybe compare the two, but we're not gonna be changing the machines anytime soon.
Right.
These are hopefully gonna be here well past when I'm sitting at this table. Joe?
Service, who services them?
There you go, you can, you know, if you get the Suzuki, the service, if they're gonna back up the service, it's down at McCook. If you buy them here, that's Budkey. Just by, just by my own personal experience?
No, I just wanna finish my comment.
Okay.
When you look at the 10 things to consider as, uh, responsible bid, that's one of the 10 items that you can consider is service, service range, things like that. Throw that out, I don't care, I, I like the comment about the heavier suspension, period, because if you have them loaded up, it's not a matter of speed, because we're not gonna be going fast anywhere, because you, we all have ridden it, we know what it's like going over a goddamn dog town, or even out at my cotton picking pasture, so you're not gonna go fast, it's, but it is a matter of the suspension.
I own more than one, and more than one brand, and the suspension's very important, especially when you're putting a payload on them, I don't care if you're driving 10,000 an hour.
We have two at our place that we use a lot, and we won't put our chemical sprayer on the lighter-duty one, um, our, our one that's a little heavier-built as far as carrying the load, and, um, we go up some pretty rough canyons, which you guys will be in, and there's, there's that factor to worry about, too, so I feel like spending a little more and getting the heavier-duty machine would probably pay dividends in the long run. My, at our place, we fight over who gets to drive the heavier-built one, too.
The thing, when we put our respect for these four-wheelers, we thought about the Honda, which is a cheaper-built deal, but Hondas don't have, offer that independent suspension, and they offer one shock, that's in the middle of the machine with a solid bar across the back.
We're not, we're not comparing Hondas, these are two solid.
I don't know, I'm just, I'm just comparing to what, what, why, like she was talking about, the suspension on the side of a hill with loads, that's where you, you, you see the real difference.
Okay, I see here, this price including freight, is that freight to their store or your location?
Yeah, I don't know.
Louis was going to say his, his place down there.
To his place, okay.
That, that's what I was assuming, but I gotta be careful with that.
Okay, good.
I, I don't know enough about these, although I should, because I got like seven of the things, um, and I, and I have everything, in fact, maybe even one of the little tiny 50s might be a Honda, I don't know, but I do know there's a ton of difference, this is a question, it's a question only, there's a lot of difference cost-wise between a, a Yamaha Grizzly, okay? Now, I don't know, and, and I have Yamahas, I don't know the suspension system, maybe you do, Kent, do you know, Kent, talk to me a little bit, because I, you know, a couple thousand bucks, I don't care, we're gonna have these things for a long time, and they gotta stand up.
No, I don't have a dog in the fight either, but I do know from owning a number of different brands, and I just, I mean, throw rocks at anyone brand, but part of the analysis and the challenge for these guys is something that's gonna hold up for the service we're gonna put it through, and as to Jerry's point, I don't, I don't wanna buy another one of these in two years, so they both look at these, and I don't, I don't wanna reinvent the, the analysis if, if they've got a recommendation, and Jerry started, uh, pointed out the dollar science, but also service life.
Yeah.
I'm inclined to buy a better guy.
Oh, I do, too, I mean, that's, that's why I was looking at this higher-priced $12,000 machine, I don't know if Yamahas, I don't know, is that a good, big, strong, heavy machine, more Suzuki, I don't know.
Price point, yeah.
They're seven, they're 750s versus 500.
Correct, price point-wise, I, you know, Kubota makes a four-wheeler now, but, um, traditionally their, their UTVs are a little pricier than, you know, the rest of the market, Kawasaki's, the Polaris', and maybe that's a bad assumption to make, that your four-wheelers would be out of the price realm, but that's the only other option, other than our friends over at Maxwell's, that can't supply the machine you need, that I can think of, but.
But, but, for example, this, um... But...but for example, this, um...this...and I realize the, you know, difference between a 500 and 750. And...but is...do we know if this 12...if this $13,000 machine is... if we...if we could discount these...the 750 versus the 500? I have a... Do we know is that a...is a big, strong, heavy machine, the one that we have talked about because of price? Is it a better machine? Does it have a much stronger suspension? I don't know. I don't have a clue, because I don't know what the specs are.
750s are a heavier-duty machine.
Well, no, I...I understand that, but we're talking...we're talking displacement. We talk about 750s versus 500s. I'm talking about the Yamaha Grizzly. Is that a...is that particular machine that Budkey sells, is that better than a Suzuki suspension? I haven't done the research, because usually when I find something, I'll go out and research these, and you'll read all these things and talk to people. I don't know, I was just asking. I don't...I don't mind spending another $2,000 or $3,000. If we're gonna get something that's gonna stand up and not get beat up in the hills, that's all I'm asking. Now, I don't have a clue, guys. I don't know.
So, Jerry, your recommendation, was that based simply on economics?
Uh, Michaela, yeah, 90%. Also, the...the bigger machines are harder to navigate. They use more gas. Uh, these little 450 to 500s are just about right for zipping around that dog town. The big ones are...they're...they're nice, they're tougher, but they are harder to navigate around there.
Okay, and the difference in price is $4,137 each, okay?
And with the smaller units, are you able to put those in the back of your pickups and haul them around? Or that...is that a plus for you?
If you got an open bed, I mean, you...you just can't get them on these shorter boxes if you got a toolbox or anything in there.
Right.
If you...worst come to worst, you had to load one of them in a pickup, you could. 750s, mm, not so much.
Yeah, I don't think so, yeah.
I like your idea, because I'd like to keep the business here in town, if we can.
Yeah, and that's...that was part of it. That wasn't even the main consideration.
But for the, uh...from the standpoint of, uh...of servicing and such, too. Okay, we've got a suggestion from the fellows that would be utilizing these pieces of equipment. Any other questions, colleagues?
So, is it to get the two Suzuki Quad Fives?
Yes, for $8,863 each, I believe is the recommendation.
It is.
And because somebody has to ask, does it fit in your budget?
Barely.
Are we gonna try to get those the same color, so we have some kind of a uniform thing as we go down the road with the Lincoln County Predator control sticker on it?
Or tell her do we wanna have?
Yeah, what colors are available? Choice, red, green, or blue?
I'm not really color-oriented, I really don't care.
We talked to Jim...
Doesn't make you drive any better.
We talked to Jim this morning, and he said he knows he can get two reds. He talked to his wholesaler. But if we wanted a green or a blue, he could probably get it, but he knows he can get the reds. I...I...I'd say a green one and a blue one.
And how soon would you be utilizing these?
Of course, we can get a baiter put on and pick up and a few other things. It's...
Part of the challenge is...
Chris, we wouldn't use them a lot until things dry down, landscape decadent, when we can start doing the prairie dogs. So, we're...we're probably still a month out.
A month out, probably more than a month. I mean, things are really coming around here.
Yeah, I know it.
Now, we've got some other things to consider. First of all is if you...
Get the baiter on it.
Get the baiter installed, that takes time.
Exactly.
And be ready to roll when it does dry up.
Yeah.
So, that's part of this consideration as well. And we'll just take the units to the manufacturer of those and have it mounted right on them from the day...from day one, right?
Yeah. Well, and...and what we're gonna do also, Kent, is, uh, have it mounted so we can remove it. Because after prairie dog season's over, there's no sense of, uh, lugging that around, yeah. We'll...we'll just remove it and put it in good, safe storage, and then the next season, remount it. And that way, we've got a clean ATV to use for beavers, coyotes, and so forth, without having to not only put unnecessary wear on the baiter, it's just in the way.
Haul your own leather gear.
Yeah. Jerry, uh...and I appreciate all the comments. I'm totally with you with everything you say. The only comment I would make is, just like we drive white pickups, I would hope that rather than getting a red and a blue, or a green and an orange, or a purple and a fluorescent, two greens, two blues, two reds, I don't care what it is, just keep it the same. You want the same color? Yeah. Okay, okay, I was gonna...in fact, I was gonna ask for clarification on that.
I would go with red.
Would you go with red?
I would...I would wanna make sure the property owners see where you are on their...
Fair, fair enough.
On their property.
Yeah, fair enough.
You're highly visible.
Yeah, so we don't want any camo, do we?
No.
No, okay. Okay, colleagues, what's your pleasure?
So, just to clarify, Jerry, you're saying the 2023 Suzuki King Quad is available at 88.63 per unit?
Yes, sir.
So, two of those are available, or will be. So, they're guaranteeing that availability within 30 days?
Oh, yeah.
That's what the quote says?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
In fact, we just talked to him this morning, and he figured about a week.
Oh, I see.
We just talked to Jim this morning. Kent and Jerry, I'll ask you this question. And I'm...I...you probably have shown me a budget, and I...I don't remember, but we said, "Does it fit in your budget?" And Jerry said, "Just barely." Do we know what that means? I mean, talk to me a little bit.
It's in the budget.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Well, Joe, and that's a fair question. The $60,000 that was penciled in, because we are brand-new, because we were gonna go down to the road department and steal a couple pickups, forthwith, Jason doesn't know us, so don't tell him. It's gonna be a significant savings on our original budget proposal. So, I would anticipate it can come right out of that line, I would say.
Thank you. Joe, uh, I was being a little sarcastic. I haven't seen the budget, and I don't need to. You know, if they say we're good, we're good. So, I was actually just poking a little bit of fun. Oh, okay, thank you. When I said barely, because I honestly hadn't seen the budget, and like I say, I don't need to.
I like that, I like the comment. We're not...we're not gonna let them see what that upper limit is. We're gonna try to be down in the...
There's da...there's danger in doing that, yeah.
Yes, there is, so we're, yeah. Sure, did you have something you wanted to say further?
Well, I'll throw out a motion if you would like.
I would appreciate that.
Based on the evaluation of the necessary characteristics of suspension, among other key points, and our intent to provide a long service life for these units, I also wish we could purchase in...within the community, but nevertheless, I think we're compelled to take this action to get the best value. So, I would make a motion to purchase two 2023 Suzuki King Quad 500 EPS models, uh, color red, from Lewis Motorsports and McCook. And the net cost per unit would be $8,863, uh, times two.
Okay, we have any motion?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion?
So, the...the intent is to haul these with your pickups? Or will we be needing to purchase trailers also?
Yeah, mostly, probably trailers, in addition to...
From a safety standpoint, a practical standpoint, you don't have a side-by-side. So, to the utility value, um, I think there's gonna be a lot of times when that pickup box is gonna be utilized for other equipment, additional bait, the various things you're gonna need when you get out in the country, um, doing these projects, handyman jack and tools and, um... From a safety standpoint, rather than put anybody up three and a half feet off the ground on a ramp, the price of a ramped trailer, I think, would be probably a strong consideration. I would recommend down the road that we...even though we can haul these in the back of a pickup because of their size. And that's a discussion for down the road, but, um, I would be strongly recommending that for safety, we would...we would pull them, but with a utility trailer at some point. But that's...that's... That's really not, to me, a can of mouth issue today, because if, in fact, we didn't have those with an aluminum ramp, they could be hauled in the back of a pickup, so...
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Williams?
Aye.
Brunns?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Ruler?
Aye.
Woodruff?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
You place the order?
I'll need to have you send...have them send me an invoice, so I can get a claim submitted. And then that'll be approved next week, the claim.
Great.
As soon as they get it to me.
We're on the way.
All right.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, and, uh, you may as well just continue to sit there if you want, because our next item here is to discuss and consider Lincoln County Predator and Pest Control firearms policy.
Oh, yes.
And, uh, Tyler, in fact, do you have something you'd like to add here?
Uh, no, but I will. I took it upon myself to go ahead and draft this. Uh, these will be the only other two county employees who will carry firearms even somewhat regularly as a part of their job. And so, I thought we should probably have a policy in place to deal with that. And then after talking to Tanner Batera, turns out I was right. Uh, Travelers very much wants us to have a policy. So, I endeavored to put one together. I had Raleigh send me one that the Sheriff's Department uses. I modified it fairly heavily from that. I added some provisions in it for some annual proficiency evaluation to be performed by the Sheriff's Department. Had a phone tag conversation with Jerome about that. Unless something's changed, they're willing to help out in that regard, just to make sure that Jerry and Barry can, you know, safely carry and use their firearm of choice. Uh, other than that, I guess highlights include the fact that there are provisions in there to allow these two and future field control agents to utilize their own firearms, ideally the ones that they're comfortable and familiar with, and then took some precautions surrounding those.
Okay. Looks like it's...have you had a chance to look at this at all?
No, 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 I haven't.
It's fairly straightforward, fairly straightforward.
And we would be training? Is there a written component, gentlemen, and then a proficiency part of it?
Oh, you would have to take a lot of tests.
That's okay.
It won't take much more than a week, Lord.
Do we...do we have to take the gun training course through the Sheriff's Department, Tom?
Yeah. The idea, fellas...
We took the gun courses through USDA about a year ago, I did. So, we have to go to your office to do that?
I don't even wanna finish up on that.
The idea is, fellas, that we're not gonna just turn you loose out in the county with a bunch of guns without making sure that you've got some idea how to use them. You know, which end is the business end, things like that. Again, I don't think anybody here has any doubt that you'll be proficient, but it's mostly for liability reasons.
And anytime you decide you wanna change weapons, we need to go through the course.
Yes.
It is necessary to document, though, right, Sheriff? And Jerry, this is why I reached out to you last week and said, "Pass the word to your compadre, do not carry firearms." And so, this has been adopted, and the training has been placed, and this gentleman over here says you're good to go. Then you carry firearms.
Based on the conversations that we had with both of you, it doesn't seem like there's a wide array of guns that you're gonna be using, uh, nor that you'll be using them all that often. I anticipate probably one high-caliber rifle, one low-caliber rifle, and maybe a sight armor of some choice. So, it shouldn't be real onerous. And obviously, once you do finally get to read the policy, the county will be providing the ammunition for you. So, you're not shooting up your own dime.
So, clarify, they provide their own firearms, or the county provides them?
There's both options. These two, to my knowledge, have both expressed in desire to use their own, uh, which I think is fine. They're familiar with them.
Yes, yes.
Uh, and that's why there's a bunch of provisions in there about if they provide their own firearms, they have to be, you know, free from defects, no illegal modifications. I know Barry has, uh, one suppressed weapon that he uses for prairie dogs. You'd have to make any ATF documentation about that available upon request. What I consider to be some pretty basic things.
Very good, uh, policy to have in place. An item that, uh, won't be used extensively, but when it is needed, it is needed. And, uh, we wanna make sure that not only are they safe around other people, but around themselves.
Correct, yeah. I, uh, reading through this looks really good. I appreciate you taking the time to do that and share with Deputy Kramer. Appreciate your willingness to assist in proficiency training. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would move that we authorize your signature on the Lincoln County Predator and Pest Control Firearms Policy adopted forthwith.
We have the original, or is that in my hands?
Uh, they're all originals to me.
Okay, I shall sign this original.
Second.
Jury? We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Brunns?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Hughley?
Aye.
Ruler?
Aye.
Aye.
Once it's official, after he signs it, uh, I'll have a copy for each of you fellows to sign, just acknowledging that you got it and read it. And then if we get down the road and we need to modify it, we can.
So, there's the original copy here, and the field control agent, he would make.
So, we'll give that one back to Becky, so that she's got it on file, and then we'll have them sign one each.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you very much.
And they'll have to sign that every year.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, thank you.
We're getting this on...it's getting legs of its own, and it's gaining more traction all the time.
It is.
Thank you for working with us.
Absolutely, we won't stop now.
Keep going.
We're going.
Well, before we leave, uh, you were talking about maintenance. I think you, uh...Joe brought up the maintenance on them and stuff. Are you wanting to go to Lewis to...for this maintenance, or would you rather just do it locally?
Locally, it's my choice.
Because I take...I take all my stuff down there to, uh, Mike's repair.
I'd take it to whomever can maintain the warranty.
Yes, exactly, as long as the warranty's being...
Well, he's pretty much warranted to do most of them, that's why I take one there.
I'd just take it to whomever can maintain the warranty, and I'll let the committee work with that, with you guys.
Correct.
Perfect. Thanks, gentlemen.
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay, our next item is to discuss and consider courthouse generator project and courthouse closing dates for project installation.
I have to be put on the agenda. We had a meeting last week with all parties involved, and, uh, there has been an issue with getting the switch.
Yes.
So, I'm gonna let Brandon speak.
So, the manufacturer that is in charge of all the components of the switch is still having a couple issues. From what they've, um, relied to...or relayed to NMC CAT, September 29th is when all components will be in and into NMC.
Did I hear you say September?
Yes.
29th?
Yes.
Let's throw us a little wrench into our original plan, then, does it not?
It does.
Just a little bit.
Okay, so what is this? So, uh, where do we go from here, then?
Um, in our meeting, what we talked about was, uh, what our next option for a three-day holiday weekend. And that would be Veterans Day weekend that, um, everybody's available to...to switch to. That way, we're not actually closing the courthouse, it'll be closed.
And that would be in November, correct?
Yes, November 10th, 11th, 12th.
So, Brandon, the chairman and I, we're out of town on our backfining mission, so we missed your confip. But to clarify, primarily, my concern was, is that we preemptively did all the conduit work before we poured the slab where this unit's gonna set the switch gear and so forth. Did you guys recap that, and do we have a plan there that can take advantage of the warm weather?
Between...
So that if we push this back to November...
Between hauls electric and...
We're not breaking frost and bars.
And building the grounds. They...they're working that out there in the process. They, they're working that out there in the process. I think both of them are going to be calling to get 811 and get that whole started now.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we physically walked out to the location and Kylie and Booker and Brandon and I were all there and they have a plan in place. It will start as soon as this week with getting the vaults put in place and the footings poured and the conduit laid in.
So we'll create, we'll continue that since urgency, to get the basic portion of it completed so that this is a plug and place, for lack of a better phrase.
For the most part, I know there's some that, yeah, they've, they've still got to wait till components are here, but I think that's what Halls was kind of looking at was easier on them to do some of this when the stuff's actually here, but now because we've got so much time, we're looking that, yeah, we can start doing some, some of that instead of waiting, so.
There was also some conversation with safety concerns because of the Veterans Day parade. And so we put a plan in place for having snow fence put around the work that will be started. And then, once the parade is over, they, they will start work early in the day, they will be done by the time the parade starts, so all their equipment will be cleared out of the way and then they'll pick back up the next day to finish it, so.
Okay, super.
So the courthouse will be opened on the date that we originally asked for closed?
Okay, in September. But on November 10th, Friday, it'll be closed. Is that, have we got okay from the judges and from the courts that that's?
That is Veterans Day.
That is Veterans Day.
Yeah, the 10th.
So there won't be any delay.
Veterans Day being on a Saturday, then it's automatically observed on the Fridays.
Okay, super.
So, that will help the treasurer's office, I think hopefully they'll appreciate that.
It's not at the first or the end of the month?
Exactly.
Okay, do we need a motion in this regard?
I don't know that we, was it, Tyler, did we tentatively close the courthouse that Friday or was it contingent upon making a determination of all materials here was here in place?
We made.
Well, the sign's been up for quite a while, so it's going to be closed, so.
We, we made a definitive determination there.
Well, I didn't, but making them aware is potentially going to be there and anticipating it's going to be there is different than, than a motion to be closed. I don't know that we actually did.
I recall the board voting.
Did we vote for it?
I believe there was.
The board voted, that's why we made the sign.
Yeah, there was a motion.
A lot of being here, transportation.
I mean, nobody in the public can force you to close the courthouse, but.
No, but.
The board did take the action to decide to close it Friday at either September 1st.
But to Becky's point, it was contingent upon all the, anyway, do we need to separately withdraw that or can we just simply re-establish a date?
Okay, very good.
Mr. Chairman, for convenience to the public and making sure that we're providing services, I would move that we reverse our decision to have the courthouse closed on September 2nd and instead have it opened as normal business hours.
September 1st.
September 1st, sorry.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? Roll call please.
Burns.
Aye.
Ruler.
Aye.
Hughley.
Williams.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Thank you Brandon.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to discuss and consider setting a date to accept bids for a used transport vehicle for the Lincoln County Detention Center. Gentlemen.
Jerome Kramer, Sheriff, Roland Kramer, Chief Deputy.
So.
We're actually, what is today?
Today is the 14th.
We're actually here for two vans. Two that we have in the Patrol Division are a hundred or so miles and due to the distance they travel and, and one of them is a 12 and one of them's a nine, if I remember right, an 09. We decided maybe we'd take advantage of the opportunity and trade up and we have one in CID that's getting weak. We're going to transfer one of those to CID and then trade the weak one. It's, it's lined up to cost us another 1,800 here shortly, so.
Oh.
We don't know that that's going to, not have a engine failure after that, so.
So you do have some vehicles in mind that you have located replacement?
Well, there's some around town that can easily replace these. We, we decided to go used just because if you know historically on minivans, they lose a lot of value in the first 20,000 miles, so new sometimes doesn't make any sense with them. And, so, that's the reason we went that way instead of new. I mean, when the bids come in and we look at new price, we might not accept them, but we have to start somewhere.
Yeah, okay. So this is to set a date to accept bids.
Yes.
Becky, when would you suggest we set that date?
Well, they have August, they're supposed to be into my office by August 28th at 9:30 so we can do it, or by 9:00, so we can do it like 9:30 down here.
On the 28th.
Is that what you were thinking, Ron?
Yeah.
Okay. That gives enough time for publication and such.
We'll probably, like we typically do, hand out to all the new and used dealers that have it and.
You kind of have a little bit of a niche.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's plenty of them around.
Gentlemen, are these for our over the road transports mostly?
Yeah, they'll be for the lower numbers when we're taking through a four or five. We will take the big one when we have more. And. The ones we're replacing, get a lot of use, they go. Well, especially since we took on the Federals, they get more miles, but of course those miles are paid back, so it's a, that's a good deal.
That's a good thing. That's, that's a good, good thing.
Yeah.
And so you said you're, you're seeking for two of them?
Two, yes.
Okay.
We'd be trading, what is it, a nine and a 12? An eight and a 12. An eight and a 12.
Eight and a 12. Okay, colleagues. August 28th at, what time again?
9:30.
9:30. Colleagues.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to set August 28th at 9:30 a.m. to accept bids for two used transport vehicles for the Lincoln County Detention Center.
Second. A motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call please.
Ruler.
Aye.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Burns.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is a closed, closed session. Is there need for one, sir?
Not another one, no.
One's enough, huh? Okay.
Raleigh, I'm still seeking your advice on a topic. I'll reach out to you later today.
Okay, next item is to hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives. Our crowd is getting slimmer all the time. Brian, Jason, you, how's things going out in your neck of the woods?
Good.
Looks like you're getting a road out.
Thanks Todd.
Southwest of town there.
Yeah.
Man, I looked at you and I had to look uphill, you're maybe really elevated, nice job.
Yeah, they, they started working out on the Somerset project. We did have last week a underwater inspection that's done by the state on one of our bridges that had some other findings on some of the stringers that were broken, so we have closed that bridge, we closed that immediately upon finding that out.
I know, I heard about that one.
Out on, yeah, Bignell Road, so contacted the gentleman with Central that has that bridge and they're working on getting repairs done, so.
And that's not a decision that we can ma, that's not our bridge, that's Central's bridge, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
It's, it's still considered a county bridge, but they are the ones that are maintaining that bridge.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's why the notification came to us, because pretty much all the bridges in the county are county bridges.
And there's another option for traffic in the area to take, it's not a big inconvenience for anyone while that one's closed.
Yep, so just wanted to make everybody aware of that.
How long do you think it will be closed?
I have no idea. I know they've started some repairs, but we haven't heard back from them yet. We'll probably reach out to them and find out what their schedule is.
I could work for progress.
Might take a little while though, because they, they'll have to do the repairs and then probably do another inspection and, and submit that so we can make sure we're good to open that.
Probably a good idea to get that all done before harvesting heavy equipment and trucks are.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Thanks for being on top of that.
Yep, thanks.
Okay, we will keep this session open while we finish up with claims. Sir, do you have anything you wish to speak to us about?
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm Ken Anderson from Omaha.
Ken Anderson.
Ken Anderson from Omaha.
Representing?
Technically just myself.
Okay, Ken Anderson, okay.
I'm technically who?
I'm technically, I rub shoulders with Nebraska Voter Accuracy Project.
Thank you.
And Robert Borer.
Yep, thank you.
And, thank you for letting me say that. I don't have permission to use those names as long as you ask me, right? I see them about once a week in person.
And tell me who that was again?
Nebraska Voter Accuracy Project.
Nebraska Voter Accuracy.
So explain to me, you don't have permission to use those names, so you don't have any formal affiliation?
I didn't ask him, I told him I was going to come here.
But you're not, you're not officially affiliated with the organization or with Robert Borer, you're just friends with them and rub, rub shoulders?
Yes, I talk to them regular basis, so I, more often online than in person, but in person maybe once a week, maybe once every other week. So he knows who I am.
Okay, so.
But, but he's not sending you?
No.
He has no interest in our meeting today, you're just here on your own accord.
I let him know I'd be out here.
Okay, tell me what, tell us what you have on your mind.
Robert Borer will be speaking in a day or two at, in Springfield, Missouri. And this is just by way of saying this issue's not going away. The election, the suspicion over election accuracy, honesty and integrity and so on. Mike Lindell will be holding a, if I could call it a nationwide, meeting, seminar in Springfield, Missouri. He did it last year, so this is the second year in a row. He'll be presenting some information, I don't know what that is, I'm not on the inner circle as much as Bob is, but I say that by way of just indicating to you that the issue's not going away. Election suspicion over the election integrity and their, last year, or, let's put it this way, on Frank's speech, Mike Lindell's TV channel, he has in the past, since the 2020 election, so going back to 2020 election, since there somewhere, he has in the past presented expert speakers who say that election fraud has been present in every single county in the United States. And not just fraud, but organized. And organized, and this is mathematic, it's shown mathematically. I'm not a mathematics expert, I did well in high school, but, so in a couple of days, I just want to encourage you, if you could have somebody pick that information out of the proceedings that are going to be online. I believe you have to apply ahead of time to be able to watch those proceedings. I suggest it's important to know what information they're presenting as to the fact that every single county in the United States is a part of some organized fraud, if you will, some organized effort for this.
Effort or action?
The actions are not being disseminated widely right now, but, and I'm not privy to them. But, in large part, it's connected with computerized voting equipment. That's not all of it, by any means, but that's an integral part of what we suspect is going on.
Okay. I rely very heavily on our election commissioner, who happens to be in this room and very high integrity and. Assume that's you.
No, that is not me.
Stay right there.
That is Becky. That is me.
You are, thank you.
So, are you familiar with this information that's going to be available for the, for the public, I take it?
I think he's required to sign up ahead of time to view, Mike Lindell, to view the real time, but I would guess it's going to be rebroadcast, my guess.
Okay, Becky, I'd like to hear what you, I'd like to know your, your take on this information.
I, I was not aware of the, whatever he's talking about, Springfield, Missouri. I'm sure the Secretary of State's office has been following this very closely. I'd just like to respectfully say that I've worked in the election commissioner's office for 32 years now, I've been county clerk for 20 some now, also the election commissioner, and me and my office staff have done nothing but conduct elections with integrity and accuracy and honesty for all those years. And I take offense to that, people think that, you know.
Every single county has.
Yeah, I take offense to that.
Okay. But you're certainly welcome to tell us about it.
Yes, so I'm alerting you that this would be something you'd be interested in learning about.
Okay, sounds good.
And with that in mind, my own personal project is a notification of implied in fact contract. You are the person that I'd like to hand this to. I could read this if you'd like me to, so you know what I'm getting at.
Please do.
Okay. It has to do with implied in fact contract that is formed whenever, in this case, a voter would submit, I'll call it surrender, their completed ballot between parties who signify agreement through an action as in a voter surrendering a completed ballot according to instructions of election officials. Impplied warranties and implied duties always accompany implied in fact contracts. This notice to you by me, the undersigned voter, reminds you of said contract and the accompanying implied warranties and duties that are binding by law upon you. Do you all want copies of this?
I don't care, they're already sworn. Wausau, state of Nebraska. And that's what they do.
Yes.
Okay, merely one of many aspects of the warranty is that you most accurately and honestly count and report all legitimate ballot selections while preventing dilutions by counting illegitimate votes. Vote totals in many recent elections have been in excess of the expected numbers of votes allowed and I will no longer tolerate such breach of implied contract if it continues. This is on a per voter basis. It's not like just from me to the world. Along with this is the implied duty to consider the most verifiable cast ballot by me to be the one and only authoritative ballot cast by me. I will not tolerate that my in-person ballot surrendered to you when I've presented irrefutable proof of my identity is destined for the category of provisional because an unknown person previously submitted a ballot.
I'm going to stop you, I want to, so just a couple of questions. This is something that you're putting together?
Yes.
This is not something that is done by the Secretary of State and then distributed to our election commissioners in all 93 counties? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, our election commissioner, the, the people that work our elections, they take the job very, very. So our election commissioner, the people that work our elections, they take the job very, very seriously. I don't know that this has any warrant or need in anything that we're doing, particularly when it comes to our elections, which is the chief responsibility of our Secretary of State. So I would encourage you to take that to the Secretary of State's office. And if he seems that it is reasonable and responsible for him to disseminate, that would be the path that I would recommend that you go. Okay?
May I respond to that?
No.
No, okay. May I finish reading this?
No.
No, I've got it here.
Thank you.
I've got it here. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
I believe, well, I'm only gonna speak for myself, but, excuse me. I echo what Becky just said, that our election official and all of the people that work with her are of the utmost integrity. And your coming in here and painting us with a broad brush is very offensive. And I think there's a better way to approach if you have a ballot concern.
Okay, thank you. Well, it seems to be getting bigger over the job.
What, why are you talking about?
Becky, I hated to put you on the spot, but you needed to make that statement. Thank you. Thank you for making that statement.
Yes.
You bet. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Had the fun just getting started, guys.
You indulge my wills, Mr. Chairman, because I'm gonna say to you, as the chairman of this board, you certainly have the prerogative to list any concerns that a Lincoln County citizen might have to us. But that doesn't make that an open mic for anybody's opinion, because sometimes that can get a little out of hand.
Yeah.
So thank you for listening to my
Sorry, I, no, no, no. Shut that down. That needed to be done.
No, I appreciated that direction.
For my questions too, are you related to some group?
As a member of elections, of Becky's election team, election commissioner's team. It's very precise and very accurate. There is absolutely no way that is happening in Lincoln County.
Well, look at the process. We understand that that's the case.
When you work it, there's just no way.
No.
No way.
There isn't. Chairman will be right back.
Okay.
So we're gonna have another item here as far as our object work session, right?
Nope.
Not a lot.
So there's a couple of things I'd like to go with you.
Can I tell you, work an election, you have no idea.
It's double check, triple check, quadruple check.
No way.
There are so many people involved in this process and so many checks and balances.
You know, I think most of us probably have attended, on our own time, different programs that various people that are concerned about elections around the state have had here. And so I think we've done a pretty good job of educating ourselves on, you know, the various opinions of different groups out there. And I applaud that move for that, because, you know, we do wanna do what's right by the people.
Something that was resonated with me was, I don't know, last year or the year before, when there was a lot of conversation happening in the media about election integrity, is when the head of the Lincoln County Democratic Party came in and sat in the room to show support for you, Becky. And his statement was, you know, he's participated and witnessed and been very involved and had no qualms or questions about our election process being run like a tight shoe with a lot of integrity.
And you know, the other thing, Becky, just as a matter of public information, I think you may or may not have done it before, but, you know, on some of these estimates, well, there's more people, we have more votes and we're people, et cetera, et cetera. You know, I think you and the Secretary of State and everybody involved with that process has done a good job of educating those of us in public office about that. And hopefully that message will get out to the general public that, you know, when certain groups make real finite statements, that's, it's really disingenuous.
Oftentimes, those figures can be manipulated. It's a certain point in time that voter registration changes hourly.
Absolutely.
Well, a lot of those reports come out the end of the year. Voter rolls change. Election, so how can you not, how can you not know that you're gonna have people come and go in various ways?
I, myself, my office staff, if people have concerns or questions, we've done our best to try to answer those. If there are more issues, we try to address them and
I was surprised, though, his comment. I thought his comment would be reversed when it came to provincial ballots. I thought that group would have a, I thought they would encourage it provincial until you could verify it and check it. Yeah, that's interesting.
I think some of their issue is with our scanner that counts the ballots. I will tell you, Nebraska, Lincoln County had a machine number two. So we've been doing this from the very beginning. My predecessor got it. Nadine was probably one of the most admired election officials in this state of Nebraska. She did not do that without dotting all her i's and crossing all her t's, you know, barking bridges.
Not to mention the auditing. I mean, how many, we get slated for an audit almost every year.
Every county does now. Every county has.
Now they do, yeah.
We used to do randomly, but every county has it now.
Well, I'm glad our system is working well.
I don't know about the rest of the counties in the nation, though. That was tongue in cheek.
I'm not sure why he assumed I was the election commissioner. Maybe it's because I was sitting up a lot straighter.
Maybe he saw the fangs coming out.
Yeah, sorry. I don't use my indoor face real well.
That might have been the kind of fun dialogue.
Oh, I do not. I'm just saying that I think you do a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Take care.
Unfortunately, that is a big portion of why we have lost.
Volunteers?
Probably, yeah, probably a third to half of our national election officials. So you take away all that knowledge, it'll be interesting to see.
You put another file down here?
No.
She keeps sneaking them in. May I be excused?
Yes, you may.
Excuse me.
So here the governor's in town tomorrow.
He is.
What is the name of your fund, Joe?
I am not.
You written on your trailer? What's it called?
I'm not, huh?
Yeah, well, I saw it down on some other street, so I assume what you do is take it to somebody's house, set it up, and then after it's done, you go get it and bring it back.
Leaving after the meeting today.
Talking about that.
Bless you. Did you get any opportunity to mention to the new chairman over there about our gentleman who's offering his input?
Oh, no, I have not.
Just wrote it off my plate. It's gonna be the effort.
You can email him if he wants.
I can do that. He just used his trigado. So before you leave, are you hand-delivering steak sandwiches for lunch here? A bunch of work jobs?
Who gets the sticky now?
Oh, boy. That sounds like something the chairman of the board should get.
Sounds like the chairman.
Billboard.
Oh, no.
I wanted, I had strict orders to make sure you come and see her, and she's on the phone. She goes, "Don't let him leave." She wanna talk to you and the Rhodes guy, but I think the Rhodes guy's gone.
The Rhodes guy is gone.
She thinks he's Jerry.
Right, she's got a
I'm not Jerry.
He's camp, Kathleen.
Oh, there's Jerry. Wrong, give me that number back.
Come see Julie before I leave.
Yeah, but she's got a text painter on the phone, so she goes, "Don't let him leave."
Oh, better you than all the rest of us.
This on claims while you go see what's going on.
Yeah, go ahead, Jerry. We got you covered.
Yeah, well, she's still on the phone, so don't come running right over. Just don't leave first.
He was, yeah.
Are you available right now?
Yeah.
Send them down, sign them.
Hey, bring back some leftovers.
You introduced him a lot to the Bravo.
Yes. I would not take the
People have no idea how many hours they've spent.
You're exactly right. You're exactly right. People don't have any idea. And maybe instead of running around the country making wild acquisitions, they should get involved and participate in the election process.
They want the issue at hand, because they only care about one office, one outcome. And everything else, burn to the ground to get the outcome that they want.
Yeah. And then they wonder why we have a struggle finding people who wanna be subjected to that.
To be honest, I mean, full work, it should get harder and harder. Now, a lot of them told me my voter ID stuff went in, they didn't wanna pass it down a hole, so.
Good luck here.
I don't know about you, Kent, did that number cause me some concern? Mine sounds exactly.
That's a lot of numbers.
That's a lot of numbers. It doesn't jive with the number down below, which I think
Should we cross the line through?
You might want to.
I already got one text, "I quit." Watch this. That was made before we crossed the hall.
Might get another one.
So the correct is 14250, right?
Yes.
So I'm gonna circle that, and I'm gonna draw a line on that.
Yeah, I would. Sometimes that top number's left blank anyway. It's the one over here that they go by.
That didn't take you very long. Oh. This is round one, huh?
Kent, before you escape today, I would like to have a short building and grounds conversation.
Well, you can talk right now or sit in your own committee.
No.
Oh.
Thank you.
So an official winning friends and influencing people through zoning enforcement. This is the sign out at South Beach in Maloney.
Okay.
We have now had to dump not one but two cases, because that does not give us probable cause to make contact with people that are there at night.
Okay.
If at some point you have a discussion within PPD
I will.
About maybe amending that to be no parking after dark, something. Because we've had to dump a number of MIP tickets that got issued because police didn't have probable cause. Sheriff's Department didn't, and we're gonna dump another one.
This is at South Beach.
Yep.
That's my favorite place to hang out during the day.
And during the day, it's a great place, but the issue is specifically, we don't have justification to make contact with people after dark.
Me and my grandchildren pick up a lot of trash when we go to South Beach because of the people there at night.
It's the, that's the pre- beach area that PPD has on the south of the lake. Well, the signage, the way they have it, doesn't preclude anybody from being there at dark. Which, I guess that's their choice, but
So you think that they simply just add a line that says, "No parking after"
Yes, well, no, basically.
I didn't even know that you were supposed to do that.
Well, that's the problem you keep.
I think that'd be a great to hang out place for young kids.
Turns out it is.
It is, and into my driveway.
And if only they were the worst thing going out there. So that would help out the Sheriff's Department and our office considerably.
So tickets that have been written out there had to be thrown out because no probable cause of leaving in, because it's not posted, no one throws it out.
Yeah, there's nothing that prevents the team there.
So, Kent.
I would just think that if they're breaking a law
But that's probably, yeah, they have PPD.
But they're holding open the door.
Says we are.
Without limitation. There's no overnight camping.
Exactly.
So you can't have a tent, you can't have a fire, but there's nothing saying you can't be, have your car parked there, laying on a towel on the beach with a lantern, and 12 minors have a drink or two.
I'm just confused about how come it gets thrown out.
Becky, are we doing an audit chat today?
It will take five minutes.
A minor? So a minor?
But you still have to have a reason to walk up there.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So probable cause.
Yes, we can't get probable cause, because there's nothing
I see. I've got you.
Somebody sitting in their car
Gotcha.
I will call my friend Russ and Brian home.
And they have questions about exactly what it needs to say, and they can talk to Public League panel in our office.
Okay. Thanks, Tyler. Thanks, Tyler.
So...
Aldo?
Nobody.
Oh. It'll be all right.
That'll, that'll leave a mark.
Yeah, rub a little dirt on it.
Oh, sorry. I just wrote on your shirt.
With my fan.
I write on it better than that. Actually, you didn't write it. I moved my arm into your pit.
Signing. The city came in, gave me a little map. They're gonna be working on this crossing over here by the bank that we had asked...
Who is?
Them to work, the city.
If you see a claim...
They're gonna work on probation of house. Concrete on the south side of the courthouse.
Let me know.
I'll have to send an email about parking. I don't know.
These would be big ones for perhaps to contractors. I asked for them to be sent through, but I haven't seen them yet.
It's Booker, Booker Boyer.
Oh.
This said screw through, Chairman.
I do.
It's either or.
Homeland Security.
Either or. There we go.
Or.
By the way, that Kansas State grad and I patched things over Tuesday. We're all good. We're all good.
Glad to hear that.
Yes.
So Commissioner Brunson, last week, got to tour the Wood River Dairy. Was very interesting. It's refreshing to see a young family willing to work that hard in an industry that we all use.
You're quite all right.
I'm not much sure where to go. Um, I live out on Walker Road and we turn down range and they usually have the sides mowed, you know, just a little edge. And they haven't done that in like months and months. I mean, like it's about this tall. And on range, what we come out on to hit Walker, I literally have to go out on Walker to see if, I mean, it's, I mean, on, off range to see. And I'm already on the road because the sunflowers are so tall. And I wondered, who do I go talk to?
This lady right here.
I can take care of that for you.
Ma'am, that was on my list also to talk to her about that today.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you. No, they're usually really good about it, really. Usually it's always has a little patch, this mow, it always, it's just been so much rain, I think.
Yep, and we're, we're a little shorthanded at the rain department, so...
I understand.
Reporting it is great.
Okay.
Yeah, landowners.
Have you...
Statute says the landowner must...
Have you seen, have you seen state, have you seen water between North Platte, Buffalo Bill, and freaking Hershey, Dickens? I have never seen them that tall. Ever. I mean, the rain does great thing, but... Oh, that's the other thing is, um... I'll wait, I'll wait before I make my comments.
Okay.
I apologize.
Nope.
No, you're fine. You're fine.
Hey, is range on at one six...
We're still... Okay, thank you.
And that's okay.
It keeps adjusting.
I'm sure those other runs are all worse. We just appreciate what you do, but thank you.
Private landowners can't even spray that.
Actually, the statute says the landowner is required to mow, not the county.
Yep.
But actually, it says the county should suss back.
Ma'am? Ma'am? Quick, quick point, case, point though, just so you understand, the state statute says that a landowner is supposed to do it.
Yeah, we do ours.
We do it as a courtesy. Yeah. So that's why it's not...
Well, you know, there are like two or three...
The fact that we're not there yet is because it's a B-lister, because it is. Yeah, but we do try to do those.
And you're right. There are three landowners that have mowed there.
Yep.
So get a little stretch where there is and then it's...
And they have the equipment. Some folks don't. That's why we get involved.
And down on range, we try to always be far as to...
So, yeah, yeah.
Alicia, yes.
I heard the people on Homestead was the problem. That's what I heard. Don't take care of it.
The neighbors don't think I do a very good job of it either.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
I end up using water online. I don't have a bush hog that's functional right now.
What's going on with my truck this morning?
I did, I did find out one thing, that my little mower did a pretty good job on my green. It whacked off. I mean, clean, cut off a metal tee post that I was turning around watching. And I heard this bang, bang, and I looked, whacked it sucker right off that, oh my God, I don't even want to look underneath there.
Got a big old...
Did it sharpen your blades for you?
Those things are pretty stout. Those blades are pretty stout, are they not?
It didn't even ding. It didn't even ding and it's not sharp, but it didn't even ding a blade. I don't know what kind of steel that is. I mean, just sliced it like butter.
Wow. Something you'd reprimanded the hired man for.
Oh, my God.
So Deb and I used to be on parent teacher club together in Hershey, but I haven't seen her in like 20 years, so, Monroe.
Yeah, you're right, Jerry. I would've said...
I kept thinking, I know I should know her. I know I should know her.
How could anybody run over a tee post?
Oh, we hit quite a few of them. My husband managed to get a hundred-foot garden hose.
Tells you how, uh, how much... I had some marijuana.
They ran over a, a human being?
Yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Where's this? I saw that. But you know, the thing that was funny, that didn't make sense. He had to been turned around because that was, that wasn't high where they were mowing. That, the picture anyway, looked that way. Wow.
What made, didn't make sense to me was, I can't imagine that any of that is funny. How past that point you possibly be to not hear a tractor or shredder coming? And then he was probably dead already.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Wouldn't want to be there.
No. Well, we're starting getting down to the final.
I'm hoping those ones held together with a rubber band are just all one.
I don't know, but...
That'll make the pile go faster.
Talk about overnight deliveries. I was told a hundred and seventy-five thousand is the UPS new contractor that drivers was on TV.
A hundred and seventy-five thousand?
That's what it was told.
Sure.
You believe in that?
Uh-huh. For the, for the over the road semi truck drivers, right?
Oh, no, they were telling that. Those are the box van drivers.
Oh, well, that wouldn't be... I mean, they get paid by the hours, not by the...
First of all, that was a total compensation package.
Yeah.
But...
So after...
Swinging boxes all day?
I mean, I should be the poster child. I mean, that's what I did for a living. There was nothing...
I just, my point was, that's a big career change for Tyler.
I mean, we, we had delivery drivers that had law degrees. They made more money as a UPSer and had a better benefit package. Yeah, that, I'll believe that when I see it. The semis have always had air conditioning, but not the box vans. I mean, when you, when you drive three feet and stop and get out and deliver a package, heat, heating and cooling really doesn't work. For the guys that go up in the sand hills where it's an hour in between deliveries, that's a little different.
We had a good meeting with the, out of the extension this last week.
With who?
Being of the college architecture.
Oh, yeah. Did you meet him then?
Out of the extension.
Oh, what do you think of him?
I like him.
He's a young, well, you would.
Yeah. I think it's, uh, he's coming out of, not from an academic standpoint, from a business...
Yeah, he's, uh...
Researcher standpoint.
Is that about two or three meetings with him and then had some conferences and, um, so, he's energetic.
Yeah. But approached the subject of maybe finding some partnerships through the architectural services with students that are in university under, you know, obvious strict guidance.
That was part of his trip out here. Oh, okay. I was gonna say, that, that's the reason he came out, you know, he stopped over the office, so, yeah.
Give them some on the job kind of shadowing type meals?
Yep. Not only that, um, you know, when I was in school, we would do it in Omaha, but, you know, we needed out here where there is that.
What, so what does that look like as far as...
They don't know exactly yet. Um, potential internship, bolstering the internship program and trying to get students out here, possibly with a defined project that they be working on.
I've been trying to get them out here for years on an undefined project looking for me, but it's tough. I just had a gal that left this summer to go back to school for graduate year in Kansas State.
That was one thing that I hammered home was, we have a lot of good architects out here.
See, here's another reason that you're on this side of me and Chris is...
The exact phrase was, we have very few...
Oh, okay.
Good and reputable architects and there's an obvious opportunity for students.
Just, just ask him who, who out here among those few has done the last university work here and around the area. He remembers that name. Now he's a young energetic guy, so.
Becky, you haven't given up on us ever yet?
No. I don't have a bunch on the budget.
It's good to hear.
You can scratch on it, but I don't love it.
I sharpened my math skills on a couple of them.
Mr. Williams, it won't take long for my brief discussion with you after the meeting. Like fifteen seconds.
Okay.
There's gonna be a line.
I guess. Okay, uh, this is the end of the, uh, claims. Becky, can you, uh, you go to the floor?
I really don't have a whole lot. I did simplify some calendars to Susan Mullein and she does, she didn't reply, so I'm assuming that were good as far as the dates that were on there. So she will be here to present next week.
You will be?
She will be, yes.
So is that August twenty-first, right?
Yes, so she'll be here next week.
You talking about Susan?
Oh.
So that will really be our first...
What will be?
August twenty-first.
You have one.
We all got one.
Susan Mullein will be here to present.
So I'm intimately aware.
So that'll be our first look at what we have for numbers to start out with. I did get a response from the college. We can use the theater out there for the joint public hearing. So I will work with, um, the college and the schools and all that to see, but I'm looking at probably September nineteenth or twentieth to do that joint public hearing. There were some changes to that this year if we have to...
Geez, this weekend, I'm gonna be gone, sir. Me too.
A board member does have to be there if you're one of the entities that is included in the joint public hearing.
I nominate Chris.
You can all be there actually now because they took them open, but your meetings act out of that. There, there were some changes as far as administration of it too, so.
Do or best just not have to participate?
Yeah.
I would likely be there in the audience.
But I did move into the college as well.
Okay, good, good.
Um, I really didn't have much else than that. I tried to make as many comments as I could on the side of the explanation part, so I just didn't know if you guys had any questions on anything we've seen so far.
Yes, but we'll save it for, wouldn't we have more time? I don't bet you'd hear any texts.
We'll have, I mean, we'll have workshops every week now.
I do have... And this here was that. This is a assessor. Sorry, I think that wasn't filled in there.
Yeah, because it should be the sixteen.
What's that? I might be one of my...
Yes, it did.
It seemed, it seemed weird that it went, it was so...
Which page?
This is page one on the assessors.
Page six, actually.
She just forgot one column, but the rest worked out, didn't they?
That's why she didn't.
Yeah.
So that, that will affect the bottom one, the total?
Oh, check that out.
It did add up.
It did add up.
Yep.
It did add up, okay.
So what's it supposed to be in that last bottom right?
Just turn the page and I think it has it. I think those numbers added up, I believe. She put it at the top of the page. She put it at the top of the page. It was confusing.
So it would be the same, the seventy thousand?
That's what she's requested, the seventy thousand. This was her actual from last year.
If you carry that seventy down from top to bottom, then... I just remembered that. So up here, there's a blank right there. Oh, no, wait. This is second, second page.
Thank you. I figured that's what it was.
No, you were on it.
The Excel spreadsheet of total...
Oh, yeah, that, that, but if you look at seventy on the request, it did, it did add up on the bottom.
So we need to correct that formula.
Five forty-two, the same as last.
I'm missing where you're talking.
I don't, I don't remember. But that just carried across the same as seventy thousand.
Instead of having a total in there, it has a A.
It has an A in it. Very last.
Oh, yeah?
So I just, I'll make sure that that is part of our... If the total's correct.
Okay.
Anything else, Becky?
Like I said, mixed date a little more.
Okay, and when, when will Susan be here?
Uh, I think about ten fifteen because we got stuff.
Next week. Okay.
Tammy, do you have anything else for us?
No, I don't.
College, anything else?